So world is
It worked.
No longer stealth.
And it looks like you're ready to go now.
All right, great. At 6:37 calling the January 5, 2021, meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen to order for the selectmen are present. Ms. Brascio is not. She may be able to join us later. Hi, everybody. Happy 2021. And with that, we'll move to, oh, first, an apology for we've got a number of folks in the audience. Our apologies, we had technical difficulties that Vanessa and our crack staff quickly addressed, and we apologize for the seven-minute blackout. But we're ready to go now. So first order of business, item two is public comment. I'm looking.
Actually, you have to read the governor's prologue, sorry.
You know, you're right, Brian. Yep. I'm looking forward to not having to do this. Right? Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website at www.southbrowtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southbrowtown.com/remotemeetings. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So with that, we have to call to order, and we go to public comment. And I do not currently see any hands raised. Going once, going twice. Oh. We do. Vanessa, that.
Hi, this is Marguerite Landry, the library board.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. This is Marguerite Landry. The library board is having a joint meeting with you tonight.
Okay, you guys have posted a meeting for 6:30?
Yes, and can I just, can I just call the meeting to order and say that we're coming to order at 6:40?
You certainly may. And the, my reading of the governor's prologue can cover you folks as well.
Thanks, that's great. That's great.
And it looks like we have no public comment. The only thing before you on our agenda is a volunteer interview with Mrs. Harvey, so we should be able to get to you pretty quickly.
Thanks.
Okay. Maybe quicker than I thought. I don't see Mrs. Harvey in the audience. Do we know, Brian or Vanessa? Did we get a response from her for this evening?
I believe she was planning to attend. I do not, I'll keep an eye out for her in the attendee list.
Okay, if she shows up, we can, particularly at the front end of the meeting, there are a number of places I think we could probably fit her in. So with that, even quicker than I thought, the library trustees and library director are on our agenda next for an update. So we can bring those folks over. Ryan, I see you popping up. Hello.
Everybody.
Hi, Ryan.
Sorry, I had bad lighting in this room. I think I made it worse.
Nobody can ever identify that you're actually here, Ryan. The shadow.
Library trustees, do you actually, there we go, Ms. Maney, do you actually have a quorum as well?
I think we do. Can, can we just call off Landry here? Is trustee Davis here?
Davis here, yes.
Trustee Eckberg? Trustee Maney?
Here.
Trustee Reagan? And trustee Esdani?
Here, and Kim's here too. I know she is.
Okay, so we do have a quorum. Thank you for asking.
Eckberg is in the waiting room.
Yeah.
And Vanessa, I'm gonna share the screen in a minute for the presentation, and then can I just confirm that when I go from slide to slide, the screen changes for everybody? I'm gonna do that really quick, because I know sometimes in Zoom, like you go to the next slide, and then it doesn't do it on the screen, so.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. Welcome. And we've got, we've got a preview with the slide panels that you, that you sent us for some of what is coming. This is an opportunity for, I think they're, and I think the rest of the board as well thinks it's pretty important to have our various boards and committees interact with us, and in this instance, an opportunity to update us on things you're working on, particularly in this particularly difficult climate that we find ourselves in. Any issues that you've confronted that you might want us to weigh in on, or and/or that we might be able to be of some assistance on, and just a general discussion about what is going on at the Southborough Library. It's usually good things. So with that, I guess, Mr. Donovan, I'll leave, I'll leave it up to you and the trustees to go through our update.
Sure, and I'm, I would anticipate that the selectmen probably have questions that are probably not related to my presentation. I wanted to talk a little bit about new resources the library has added, so that we could better inform you and residents of what the library's offering. These are some new additions, and then some, some old favorites that we wanted to go over tonight. So thank you for this opportunity to address the Board of Selectmen on updates to the library's website and electronic resources. So we'll kind of go over a little bit of the website, too. If you haven't gotten a chance to visit us online recently, I would strongly encourage you to. The library staff and I have been very hard at work adding a lot of new content in e-resources for, for everyone in Southborough. If you click on the "I Want To" section at the top of our navigation bar, then scroll down to "Research Databases." We'll start there. The library provides an annotated list of e-resources on our website. These include any new and local resources, as well as a full list of resources provided statewide for Southborough patrons through the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. These resources will help you find information and conduct research from the comfort of your own home. The library has added several new resources recently. You might be asking, what is Creative Bug? It's a video platform that allows you to watch thousands of classes about arts and crafts. This is the perfect resource if you're feeling a little bit crafty. Do you have, do you know a remote learning student who is struggling? Younger users can use Help Now from Brainfuse to get free virtual tutoring and help with studying. In the same vein, older users can use Job Now for help with job interviews and resume writing. If you know someone currently unemployed that is trying to enhance their skills to get back in the workforce, Job Now can help them get started. Canopy provides on-demand streaming for lots of movies and educational courses. Southborough users can check out three titles per month, and they have unlimited access to kids' content and the great courses electronically at their fingertips. What is Skillshare? This platform provides hundreds of curated how-to video tutorials where patrons can take classes on a multitude of topics that fuel new creative skills. The library subscribes to many local resources exclusive for Southborough Library cardholders. Both Ancestry Library Edition and J. Store are now accessible from home, and Freegal Music is once again being offered for song downloading and music streaming. Recently, our News Bank resource has expanded to include the full visual edition of the Worcester Telegram and Gazette. Having trouble getting started with these e-resources, maybe? Introducing LibGuides. These are step-by-step guides to introduce our users to the many databases and electronic offerings that we have. Many of the LibGuides include lists of related books and resources sorted by topic. We are adding new LibGuides every week. Looking for your next great book? The library website includes Reader's Advisory tabs that has lists of book recommendations from staff with individual descriptions and recommendations for each title. Why the staff recommends it, and the list to, link to the CWMS catalog. When applicable, entry links to ebook options are also available through Hoopla or Overdrive. If you still need help, we also have a new library help chat. This allows people visiting the website to type messages and get reference help from library staff online. So those are just a few of the things on the menu at your local library. Thank you for taking your information services to go. And at this point, if you guys have any questions?
Oh, we will definitely have some questions. Are you guys, I think you can stop sharing the screen now.
Sure.
But we, before we get to questions, and we might just go and Chelsea, I'm gonna go to you first, but just before that, we've got the, it has a great presentation. I've got a couple of quick follow-ups. But any of the trustees want to weigh in before we get to a bit of a Q and A with any updates you want, or issues that you want to flag before we start talking? And if the answer is no, that's fine.
I, I think this is Marguerite Landry. I think we could talk about the amazing accommodations that Ryan and the staff have made because of the pandemic to still get books and services to people in town.
Okay, well, I suspect that we will talk about that. Chelsea, I can continue in a second. My first question, just on, on what you've gone through, Ryan, do you all collect data on how, with what frequency and in what volume, the various things you just went through are being used?
Yes, so we, we are, we collect annual statistics, but we're starting to break those down more monthly, and we have six months' worth of data. So we're finalizing a report that's from July through December. We're gonna also publish that on our website so that people who are curious about these can, can see. Some of the new electronic resources were, we only sort of launched them in September and October. So in those cases, those are a lot of the individual slides you got at the beginning. Some of those resources, we only have maybe two or three months' worth of data. So those didn't start in July because they're relatively new, but things that were, things we subscribed to prior will have data on those, and then we're gonna keep going. So we're trying to decide exactly how to structure the reports. We may do a monthly update. We may give more of a quarterly overview. The longer we have time to sort of tra, track the user data, the more we can kind of establish, you know, trends or what's popular. We're also working on utilizing our social media to better market the resources. We find that if we do like a Facebook or a Twitter post, the usage rate increases, as you can imagine, because people are seeing what's there, or they're seeing, you know, a new feature that they could access on it. The preliminary data, I would say, especially on the Help Now and Job Now, resources which are sort of the live chat helps, those have been very encouraging.
And, and when you break down that data, are you gonna be able to, either at first blush or later on, break it down by the age of the folks who are using the various things, or is it simply gonna be the hits?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't believe so. I don't think we can look at data, because they don't collect data on that. So a lot of the, like, the way that Help Now and Job Now are kind of structured is there, I think, I think it's K through 12, it's through 12th grade for Help Now, so they won't help like college-age students. It's not, the resource isn't designed for that. So some of them are kind of built in because they have specific age ranges that they help.
Okay, all right. Ms. Melonowski.
Thanks, Ryan. I do have a few questions. And Marty took my first question, but how much staff time is utilized to maintain the online resources versus the other functions that the staff's doing?
I would, not a significant amount of time. I end up taking the lead with most of the electronic resources. This has been kind of a, a passion project. It's why I did a 13-slide presentation to you tonight. I would say that sort of the staff time is more on the marketing end, and it's sort of establishing that. And I, I probably give a lot of guidance on exactly when to do that. So I would, it's pretty nominal. I, I would say a lot of the staff's time has been divested and devoted into the curbside effort, which takes, takes up, as you can imagine, a lot of the time doing phone calls and follow-up and packaging and checking out orders.
And is this, are the online resources you pay per hit, or is it we pay for a subscription and it's somewhere in your budget?
So, so all of these are within the library's budget, and then we have also budgeted for the resources next year. The thing that we can anticipate is sometimes the vendors like to increase the price. So we, that is part of the reason why, like, when, when I just answered Marty's question, and I know you would have questioned too about the usage, that's gonna play a role, I think, into assessing whether or not the, the cost is worth the benefit. I'm also looking at ways to sort of provide context. You know, I, I would say we wanna, we're a big fan right now of, of job help resources, because we know that the unemployment rate in the state is so high. So I, I think that that's a need that is important, that we can try to assist with. Most of them are annual subscriptions, to answer your first question. So that, it's easy, because we pay basically a single bill. Their resources I didn't go over, which are in the electronic offerings, are Hoopla and actually Canopy, which is one of the new ones. Those are a cost per use, so, or pay per use. They like to use the PPU on the invoices. So that is, we don't pay anything if nobody uses them. We do pay per item, and then that is folded into the same line item that we take print materials out of. So what I've tried to do, and what the trustees have helped me do, is try to establish a line item specifically for the annual subscriptions, and that was something we talked about in the advisory meeting a couple of weeks ago. But the, the Canopy and Hoopla are the exceptions. Those are folded into sort of what we do as far as our weekly bills. And we get, we get a monthly bill, I should say, in those two items.
Okay, thanks, Ryan.
I think you muted, Marty.
Jay? No, still?
Yep. I'll say, thank you, Marty. The, so, again, was also interested in usage, and I think we've really touched on those online resources that you mentioned. The curbside pickup and books and all that, just curious, you know, since you've been able to start that, if you've been able to, you know, note, you know, levels of borrowing on, on books and other materials through the curbside program versus past years? Is that starting to approach normal? Is it still lagging? Is it above normal?
So I, our circulation is, at least from, from my conversations with other library directors, is slightly higher than a lot of our neighbors that are in bigger communities. And I think a lot of that is driven, probably in large part by our children's circulation. We have parents who check out, that, it hasn't stopped just because we're doing it more remote. We have parents who check out 20, 30 books, or who have multi-children households, and they're, they sometimes come every week. So I would say, I, I don't think our circulation, we don't have year-end data, because we've, we, we kind of were at the end of last year when we ended in June, and then this will more be like the full year of it. We're hoping that by the next fiscal year, things are a little bit more back to normal, and then we'll be able to see sort of what the, because that's how we gotta look at statistics, right? It's sort of when the, the statistical reporting period is over, so we'll be able to kind of weigh how good we did with circulation. But what I can say is, sort of tracking the data month to month, there's an impact. We're definitely circulating slightly less material, but it's still fairly high. I, I, I'm happy with the usage, I would say.
And we can, so I'll let others, you know, get to other questions related to this, but be curious too, Marty, if we can get an update on the physical improvements of the building itself as well.
I was expecting that question, Brian, so I'm ready.
Well, do you want to jump into it now, Ryan?
Sure, so we, as, as many of you are probably aware, there has been a lot of construction over the last month over at the library. Our, we're getting a brand-new roof, and the stairs have been completely repainted and are starting to be rebuilt. The majority of the work, I'm happy to say, is over. I believe the stairs should probably be completed in the next two weeks. We're hoping, we've had a couple weather delays. Anytime we have heavy rain or snow, it, it delays things a day or two, and then it seems like every time we have like two days' worth of work, there's some sort of weather problem that we've run into. So hopefully, we have a couple good, clear days in January, and we can get the bulk of this done. I'm anticipating pretty much all of, of the big-ticket items, the roof and the stairs, will be done probably by the end of January. There's a couple items that are gonna be pushed out. The, we're getting storm windows installed in the, the front area. There have been delays because of the pandemic, and the other item was, we're getting a new limestone sign etched. And initially, the project was going to replace part of the sign that was most degraded, but since we've cleaned the building, the damage to the sign was a lot more extensive than we initially thought. So the trustees made the decision to replace the entirety of the sign. So that's because it's gonna be done in limestone, and they need to take a stencil etching of the sign. That, that's gonna take a little bit more time than we anticipated. So we're, we're hoping those will be completed by March, maybe April. So there'll be a couple smaller items before the project is, is completely wrapped up.
Good. And if somebody, well, not if somebody, I'll do it. If, if you could open your doors whenever you're ready, when do you think that would be?
We are hopeful that we're kind of anticipating a rough idea of July, sort of when the new fiscal year hits, mainly because we'd like to start sort of more of our classic summer reading program. I think a lot of it, Marty, is gonna depend on, on how the vaccinations go in the next couple months and, and where people are at. You know, if we have to look at, what, what I'd really like to do is when we open the building, that we're open, if that, if that makes sense. I, I'm hesitant to place like heavy restrictions on borrowing, or to let people in one at a time. You know, we are already talking about doing more outdoor programming when the weather gets better, and sort of how to handle rain if that comes up. So we will probably be looking at a combination. But I, I am, I haven't discussed this with my board either, so they can, they can feel free to weigh in as well. But July is sort of my rough timeframe, and if it is safer to do it earlier, that, that's what we'll look at.
Mr. Styros.
Thanks, and thanks, Ryan. Good report and impressive array of electronic materials. Following up on Brian's question, I think interesting to think of it, of, of usage overall, and my guess is that print circulation is down some now, and electronic is up. If you had to put an estimate on it, would you say that overall, from all modes, that we're roughly comparable to where we were before the pandemic? Or are we still behind in terms of overall utilization concerning both print and electronic media?
We're a little bit behind. I, I can say, the electronic usage from where it was a, a year ago has doubled, but it was still significantly lower than print circulation. So we're a small community. I'm, I am happy with the amount of people who were checking out ebooks before, but I'm a lot happier now, I have to say. You know, people definitely have found us online in a way that they didn't pre-pandemic. That, we have noticed, obviously, drop-off, because people can't, I think a lot of it is that people can't come in and browse. So we've tried to find creative solutions for that. You know, we are, we are hoping to kind of launch a program in February where you can go on a blind date with a book, and the staff will be able to pick a book for you, and then you can see if it's, you know, a good match. So there's a couple creative solutions we have. Kim Ivors has increasingly been sort of doing suggestions for people, so she'll kind of do kids' book bundles, because honestly, people are running out of, they, they can't come in and just pick things to, to read. So it has been helpful to have Kim pick books for them. So, you know, we're trying to apply that to the adult patrons, too. But people, as you can imagine, the older they get, the more, the more sort of, they know what they want, so.
And, and, and are less interested in you telling them what they want, so.
Yes, yes, definitely, definitely.
If, on the blind date thing, if, if the book's a match, you have to buy the book, then, is that correct?
No, you still, yeah, you, you have to, you're gonna have to break up at some point.
In terms of the range of electronic content, that's pretty impressive in terms of the, the material that is available to people. Are there particular areas that you're looking at to say, we've got a real opportunity, there's great interest in, I don't know what it might be, but international materials, or, or nutrition, food recipes, or those types of content areas that you can look at and say, either based on experience from other libraries around the country, or other sources, are there obvious areas which you look to next to expand that electronic content?
We, I've written a grant with the ALA that we're hoping to hear back from in the next couple of weeks. I'm giving access to Consumer Reports, and we've, we've electronic access to it, so that people could access it from a, from a database. We, we're looking for, that's been one of the feedback pieces I've gotten in strategic planning, is that people have asked about financial resources. So that's an area I think we're looking to go, is Consumer Reports, maybe other things that are equivalent.
Interesting. Do you have video games for kids?
Yeah, we do, yeah.
In terms of the group game kind of things that are out there as far as multiplayer experiences?
We just added Nintendo Switch games to the collection, so that's probably the newest, the newest thing.
I'll get some feedback from parents who are concerned about too much screen time, but that's clearly a popular area. So, well, again, thanks for the update, and it sounds like you're doing well in terms of all the crazy pressures that we have here, and hopefully to get back up and running in July or earlier. Thanks.
Hey, hey, Ryan, this is Marty again. I'm gonna, I may, maybe end with this, and see if anybody else has anything that they've been thinking about while we've gone through the list. But, I mean, there's a decent amount of construction that's going on at the library right now. I mean, it's one of the weird benefits of the, the pandemic, that it's easier to do construction on an empty building than a building that's really busy. It, it's an older building, obviously, and there's always gonna be, you know, maintenance and the like. But just generally, from, from a, from a, an in-person use perspective, from an electronic use perspective, just across the spectrum, what do you see for the, in the next two years, five years, I don't know, you probably haven't thought, but 10 years for what the Southborough Library looks like? And, you know, are you folks in the process of thinking about or putting together a two-year, five-year, 10-year plan for what, what it might look like?
So our, our current strategic plan is through 2014, and that's, that's online, it's on the website in the About section. We will be doing probably Um we will be doing probably a new strategic planning where we'll um get uh community input. I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-four. Did I say two thousand fourteen? Two thousand, I I apologize, two thousand twenty-four. It's been a long day, guys. So um we're we're good through two thousand twenty-four. I think in in at the beginning of that year, we're gonna be um or possibly at the end of two thousand twenty-three. We're gonna be looking at doing a new community survey. We'll probably do a couple of focus groups. And we will start asking community input i- in what they're looking at. I I mean, there's a couple of things that come up, you know, uh more parking. I think is alw- always one of the top things at the list. People always want more and different and dynamic programming. So that's a big piece that we try to add over time. And then a lot of of what, there's different. Input pieces that factor into it, but a lot of it has to do with with space inside the library. People have, I think in the last strategic plan, somebody asked for a gym. That that is probably not something we're gonna add. I I I'm sorry to disappoint that person, but I think um trying to have, one of the things that has come up. Is that we've we've um talked about maybe doing music concerts long term. And just the current space doesn't, it's it doesn't lend itself to that. So we we do want to look at ways to maximize the current library space. And then I think, you know, we are looking at sort of a long-term future. Are there ways to? Um look at the state construction program through the MBLC. And see if there's planning and design grants on expanding the library long term. That's not something that I think is going to be any anywhere in the near uh near term. But this is more of a long-term project, probably in the next ten years.
Uh if I don't see any other hands going up by members, I think. And if if there are any um uh follow-up responses from any of the trustees. Uh obviously, Ryan does a pretty nice job representing you folks, um but if you want to weigh in, um uh speak now. Janet, you are you unmuted? Does that mean you want to weigh in?
I believe I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I'd like to just say, um I've been going to the construction, up until the holidays, I was going to the weekly construction meetings in the library. And although there were a few weeks that they had to close because of fumes from the glue on the roof, whatever, for the most part. These folks have been working with constant construction noise and disruption. And, you know, I'm there for an hour and a half, mostly, a little bit longer sometimes, and I'm running out the door at the end of those meetings. It's a really difficult work environment, and I think the staff, including Ryan, has done an amazing job given that. I don't hear them complain, they just come in and they get to work and uh, you know, and it's been pretty trying at times, so. Just wanted to give them some applause for that.
And um um Ms. Eckberg, uh you're also unmuted?
Am I muted?
Yeah, hello?
Uh yeah, this is David Eckberg, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh I I simply want to echo um um what Janet said. Uh it's it's amazing to me. I'm I'm the rookie here, I'm the the new newest of the trustees. But I've been very impressed um with the the extent to which Ryan has managed uh under. Uh very suboptimal conditions and uh it's a real tribute to him. I'm not just saying this is a lot of rah-rah either, but it's. It's very impressive to me that that he has been able to keep all these balls up in the air as well as he has. Uh and it's a real tribute to him and Kim Ivors and and the senior staff there, they've done a great job.
And Ms. Regan.
Hi, um I am unmuted. Um I did want to say I appreciated all of your questions about um statistics and usage. Especially for the new electronic programs. Um that's something that comes up in our meetings uh frequently. And it's something that we're definitely working on and looking to expand. Um we definitely want to know. What is being used so that we can make decisions in the future. I think it's very um. Appealing to say, okay, how are we doing now in terms of like book checkouts from from normal times? Um and I don't think that's something that is going to be like an apples-to-apples comparison, but I think what we should be looking at. Is what Ryan has been doing to um look at different types of resources that can. Accommodate what people are going through right now with, you know, the physical building being closed and transitioning to electronic resources. So I think that um Ryan has done a great job in bringing about different types of resources that could. You know, appeal to any age. Um and as we come up and continue using those. You know, I know I've used a lot of them myself, but um statistics and usage are definitely things that are on my mind. Um to push Ryan on um as he is typically prepared. So um yeah, I just wanted to say that, thanks.
I just wanted to echo Kim. Um Brian has done an amazing job of finding the online things that people in town need. Um I know he went through the PowerPoint, but if you get a chance to check out some of those things, it's amazing. I think uh I have a daughter in school right now and it's a lot of struggles, but um there's like the tutors, there's. Um all the skill builders and other things that are, besides the games, as Sam mentioned. Opportunities for them and adults to learn new skills. Um I suggest you check both some of those out because it it I think it's giving people. Things to do and broaden their horizons while they're stuck in their homes. So thanks for all you've done, Ryan. You've done a great job and all your staff is really hung in there.
All right, thanks very much. I think we may be done for the evening.
I guess I also want to thank you all for having us tonight. I want to thank all the trustees for attending. Um it's, they all came to the advisory meeting a couple of weeks ago and they all came tonight. And I'll I'll just um I'll kind of echo, I think we have the best library staff in Massachusetts. And they all should be applauded. They've all done amazing work and I'm I'm really proud of our staff in Southborough and I'm proud of our library. So thank you.
But we feel very supported by the town and that's important. So anyway, um. If nobody has anything else to say, I'm going to adjourn, I'm going to move to adjourn our our meeting. I'm doing a second?
Second.
Okay, and um all those in favor, trustee Davis, not here, trustee Eckberg.
Hi.
I'm here, hi.
Thank you, Jane, sorry. Uh trustee Mani. Trustee Reagan.
Hi.
And trustee Estani.
Hi.
All right, the meeting's adjourned at seven fourteen and thank you very much to the board for listening.
All right, thank you and Happy New Year, everybody.
Yes, you too.
Thank you.
I think we are pretty lucky to have that uh that library, but in terms of the facility, the location. And and obviously terrific staffing, so good stuff. Um and now for the fun part of the evening. Mr. Ballantyne to update us on fiscal year twenty twenty-two. I see Brian B's name there, so.
Yep, we're just bringing him over right now.
Oh, no, no, I know, I know. I'm just filling the airtime. I hate dead time.
Any good jokes to tell?
There he is.
How are you?
Brian, our next agenda uh uh agenda item says Brian Ballantyne, Finance Director, FY twenty-two budget update. Floor is yours, Brian.
This is indeed a budget update, not a budget discussion, a budget update. Budget discussion will be much longer. So yes, the real fun part of the evening. So I think you've got my um sheets that I sent you. Showing our summary and roll up where we stand with the budgets at the moment. And all the budgets are basically in. Um they're all in ClearGov, which I don't know how many of you got a chance to go in and and look at some of the detail. On some of the departments, so you can do that at your at your leisure. And you know, if you have questions, you can obviously ask any one of us or the department. Um so we are at a elevated tax rate of, you know, about nine percent, as you can see. Um most of the discussion, I think, will focus on the expenses, not the revenues. The revenues are. Probably not going to change all that much or or get better that much to get that down. So um we're basically looking at the expense side. There's a couple of expenses that may change. As we go along, a common one is health insurance. So it's a, obviously, health insurance is a big number, so. That could change anywhere from fifty to a hundred to probably upwards to two to two hundred fifty thousand, depending if we get. Really good negotiated rates, so we'll we'll stay in touch on that. We'll probably know more in another month, thirty to thirty to sixty days. Um overlay still needs to be uh analyzed a little bit more by the town assessors, so. Um that may come down a little bit too, but um I can't speak to that yet. Um other than that, the the bud, like I said, all the budgets are there. Um so tonight, what I was hoping to do is just, you know, give you that status, give you the bad news now that the holidays passed. And um kind of find out where the board would like to go, because I think. There's basically three, three things we want to do, at least three things on my mind, and that's to establish. Um maybe a goal that the board wants to see, to get this tax rate down to, you know, whether you want an estimated two percent, five percent. Eight percent, um you know, whatever number that the board may feel is appropriate. Obviously, I think nine percent is a. Is is not going to be supported by too many people. And I think the capital is part of the, you know, we knew capital was going to be going up this year, so. It's about a seven hundred, just under eight hundred thousand dollar increase from last year. Um which equates to about one point seven percent in the tax rate. So I think it's a valid question to ask if you if the board is willing to. Support holding that harmless or if that's just irrelevant and you want to get down to a certain percentage and. Forget about that issue. Um and the third thing, I guess, is is there anything? The board sees as far as departments or areas that you do not want to visit or reductions. Um you know, I I hate to say sacred cows, but that's, I guess, a term that other communities put into these type of things. So if there's any kind of department or area that the board sees that they um they don't want to. You know, look at for for reductions in services or anything. Um we should probably know that ahead, you know, sooner ver- sooner versus rather than later. Um I think that's kind of the main goals, you know, it's kind of a high-level discussion this evening, but. Um the board should also, before I stop, the board should also think about uh possibly, you know. Meeting with advisory. Advisory, I'm sure all of you know, has been going through, meeting with departments and they still have. Um several weeks to to kind of go through that process, but by the end of the month. Um or right around there, they'll probably be through most of the operational departments. So I I would probably think the time to set a meeting with them uh is probably a good idea, number one, and and probably. The thought of setting up a a, you know, when that time might be appropriate is is probably getting close, so. Um that's probably another thought that the board wants to um talk about a little bit. So I think that's the main points I had tonight. I know it's it's, again, it's not, it's not fun like the previous. Um update, but there it is, and um uh just to remind you that. Um a percent on the tax rate is, because I'm always asked this, so. A million dollars is two point two five percent, so it's roughly four hundred thousand, but um just so you get an idea of. Um the magnitude of trying to get that tax rate down a little bit. So that's, that's basically where I stand right now and um welcome to discuss what you want to do further.
Hey, Brian, can you? Can you um share your screen and um I'm not sure if we'll put up all of them, but the but the. And it it relates somewhat to what you just said in terms of the um uh. What the movement is in terms of a percentage of a reduction or the like. So can you put the the first screen, the Tana Southborough draft twelve thirty twenty? Yeah, because folks, you know, watching on YouTube or looking at home, it also kind of focuses my mind a little bit, but so. It it. Right now with the, and this obviously, this process plays out um this way every year. Is there is the initial um uh input of information from the various departments? And then based on that, an initial set of numbers, which is what we have tonight, are generated. And that initial set of numbers right now, um um if we just stopped, would be a. Nine point oh two percent um tax increase, which translates into about. Nine hundred and fifty-three dollars per average um uh home value, right?
Correct.
So for each percentage, in other words, you said, you know, is is there a target that someone has in mind? I don't have a target in mind tonight. Um obviously, except as, you know, I think everybody's mindset is a tax increase that is as low as possible. Without um adversely impacting the important services in town. Boom, you know? Um you know, how we get there is a little bit more granular than that, but for each, in other words, if we. To go from nine percent, which is which it basically is, to eight percent would require a. Uh a dollar reduction of what? Is it about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars? Is is am I, is my math right?
For, I'm sorry, one percent, so you want to go down one percent?
Four hundred to get here, so.
Yeah, four four hundred thousand, right around four hundred thousand.
Okay, and so. All right, let me do my ma- let me do the math real quick. So. For reduction in the neighborhood of down to to a a. Less than five percent tax increase, at least based on the numbers we're working on right now, would. Would require us to shrink the size of the current expenditure size of side of the budget by about two million dollars.
Just under, yep. Yep.
Okay. All right, I guess I'm going to start with Mr. Shea. And I'm gonna see if. All right, Brian?
Yep, okay, so so I guess my answer to where do we want to go is down. So, which I think is everybody's uh goal as well, and. You know, I don't have specific uh recommendations right now, I'm kind of still plugging through stuff myself, um but. Um also think it's. In my opinion, for me, it'd be arbitrary right now, just to throw a a percentage there. Um you know, I think we need recognizing that. Slightly less than two percent of the overall nine percent is attributable to capital. So the the rest of it is just over seven. Again, you've asked it and I don't have an answer for it now, but do we want to hold capital at its level, knowing that? We've kind of kicked the capital um items down the road a little bit, we're paying for it now. Um how much lower can we go on in the operating side, so? Again, don't have any magic bullets right now, but. Lot of work to do and with, I guess, go cutting to the chase at the end. We've obviously set the town meeting date. Um with that date in mind, what is our absolute end date where we need to be wrapped up with this process? To get budgets into warrants and all that?
I think your last meeting in February or by the end of the month, February, in order for us to get things to the printer. And getting things um getting things posted. So we may have to throw in a couple of extra meetings, but I say by the end of February should be the target.
Yeah, so we're at order magnitude six weeks away from meeting to wrap this up. Holding the dates that we have. Holding the dates that we have currently, but. No, I think that's it, just curious to hear what other members have to say, Marty as well.
Uh Mr. Skyvers.
Hey, thanks, uh thanks, Brian, for the overview, and I share. Some of Brian Shea's comments on this, still relatively early in the game, but no easy, obvious solution to the financial crunch, certainly. Um I've been following the Capital Planning Committee discussions, for example, and. I don't see if there's a whole lot of wiggle room there in terms of stuff that we can say, yeah, we don't really need to do that. It seems to me when an interesting opportunity on the capital side could be grant funding, and I think we're going to talk about that more later. In this meeting this evening, but I think there may be some interesting opportunities to find other sources of funds for some of that to relieve some of the pressure. But I'm um I'd struggle to find a way to cut that capital budget recommendation significantly, I guess, based on what I've heard of the Capital Planning Committee talk about there. Um in terms of overall tax increase, I also don't have a specific number, although I would say. Uh I'm prepared to support a greater tax increase than we've had in the last year, for example, in order to preserve some of the things, as Marty mentioned, that are. Critical in terms of town services, so it seems to me uh we've got to make some hard choices on that, but I would be. Willing to to look at a greater tax increase than the two percent or so that we've had most recently here. Um in terms of sacred cows, the one that stands out for me, I don't know that I call it a sacred cow, but the. Board of Health has obviously gone through some real stress recently and appears to be on a good track for the remainder of FY twenty one. But I think the pandemic effects are going to be with us for a longer period of time than just this budget year. So I I think that we've got to look very seriously at supporting the things that the Board of Health is trying to do, so that's. The one that I would keep focusing on, mostly there are some others in there that are important, certainly, but that one stands out for me, so. More to come, it's going to be a real challenge, but I think we can get to a reasonable solution, thanks.
So um I'm with Mr. Shea, Mr. Skyvers, in terms of not having a specific percentage in mind, um although it does need to go down. Um I think the reason why I'm struggling with a specific percentage is I I also want to understand. What we're giving up or missing out um by going to a. You know, arbitrary three percent or whatever, um so I I think it's hard for us to put a number to it without kind of seeing some options of, if you did this, then. Um this is what you would lose, um in terms of capital, um I. I would not want to move out capital, I think some of the things that we deferred from last year were also deferred from prior years, so I don't see a lot. Um that we should continue to defer, I guess, um one of my questions for you, Brian, would be. Is there anything else on there that you could recommend to be bonded, and then what would that do for the outlook? Over the next five years in terms of levy capacity and um kind of long-term planning, so I'm not sure if there's anything. Else on that list, I think, I think the list that you uh in your other slide had to. Um bonded, one of the CPC articles and something else. And then in terms of the areas not to reduce, um I think everyone should be fair game, I think. Um we, you know, need to be careful that we put in place long-term solutions and that um we're strategic about it, and um everybody kind of needs to. Be a team player here and and, you know. Really look at what the needs are for the next fiscal year um without sacrificing long-term goals.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment, because I think um I think Ms. Malanowski kind of synthesized. The point that Mr. Ballantyne was trying to make about trying to assign, you know, a a goal that, you know, that you'd like to see this budget at. Um you know, specifically, if you give us that information, and I'm not saying that I'm really, that I'm asking for it tonight, but. The goal of asking for that is so that um we can provide you with options on how to get there and what that would mean. Um and and so, you know, I, we don't just want to put things up on the table to get to what we think is, you know, is a good number. Um you know, we we would like the board to drive that unless the board says you think, you give us what's reasonable. Um and, you know, and we'll, and we'll work off of that in terms of options, but if you give us, if you say four percent, five percent, whatever you. Set it at, we can give you options on how to get down there, and then you can, basically, it's kind of like a menu approach. Of what something may be more important for you to keep in rather than to get to that that target number, so. It it's just a a way to give us a little bit of a guideline to work towards.
Yeah, I guess, um. You know, it's interesting, because there was some criticism of of of. An approach, honestly, that I like. Um um that we sort of adopted a hybrid model of last year. Which is when we, when the, when a, when a crunch hit after everything hit March. And that is, I, I mean, there's three, basically three. Decisions that are, that are, that need to be made, number one is what we are comfortable recommending. What advisory. And the Board of Selectment or advisory independently is comfortable uh recommend recommending, and then ultimately what. The voters at town meeting are going to approve in terms of spending. And. Nobody wants their taxes to increase at all, but everybody knows that they are. Um and the 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 question is, how much are you, you willing? Um how much are you um able a- as a voting community to um increase your taxes? And it, in my mind, it's impossible to know that without knowing. What happens if you don't have a nine percent increase? What happens if you don't have a seven percent increase? What happens if you don't have a five percent increase? What happens if your taxes only go up either level funded or two percent? Um because then you understand what the trade-off is, on the one hand, taxes going up. Some low level or some higher level, um and what services. Or capital items are going to be impacted by that, and. I don't have a better way of doing it than going back to departments and saying, particularly the larger departments, and saying. If you reduce your your budget so that we can live within with a five percent tax increase or a two percent at tax increase. What is your budget going to look like? Is it going to impact personnel? Is it going to impact uh the 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 way you're able to offer services? Is it going to impact uh um uh? You know, from a, from the school's perspective, is it going to increase uh class sizes? What's going to happen if if we cut two million dollars out of the budget numbers that we have right now? Again, I'm willing to listen to a, to an approach that is different than going back particularly to the large departments and saying. We've got your number uh uh that we've asked for, that you, and I don't even want to say that you would like, that you think is necessary for you to provide. The necessary services to the town of of Southborough. We may, we may not be able to live with that number, we may have to live with a lower number, and if we do, and if you had to cut two percent, five percent. Eight percent out of your budget, what would it look like? What would happen to the town services? What would happen to your personnel? What would happen to training, all of those things? Again, I'm, I'm happy to listen to a, to a different approach than going back and saying, give us what your department is going to look like with. With X percentage of fewer resources, but I I don't know a better approach, that that that's, I guess that's my overall reaction.
And I think that's a perfect guideline, Marty, I I really think that that that, you know, was beneficial. Between March and and May last year for trying to get us where we needed to. Um and so, I mean, if the board said, look, give us, give us an idea of what things look like at four. You know, give us an idea of what things look at five, and, you know, whatever, you know, um and I know that advisory has taken that approach too. And wanted to see what things look like, you know, at at different levels in past years, so I think that's a perfectly. You know, um acceptable approach, and it at least gives, you know, the finance team a little bit of an idea of of where to, of where to start to provide you options.
All right, how about my fellow members of the Board of Selectmen, how do they feel?
Sounds good to me.
So can we also get a listing of everything that's new to a budget? Like um and and anything that wasn't in the budget last year, um minus. Your SAP two point five percent, so if we're adding a service or um hours to staff. Anything like that, so then we can see if we didn't add anything new, wh- where would we be? Minus capital. Um and Mark and Brian, I don't know if you have this readily available, but I would also want to include. Um any FTE ads, I know that we gave the directive to, that we were not adding any new FTEs without a corresponding revenue source, which I don't think that. Think we've identified, we don't have a corresponding revenue source to increase. Um an FTE, so are there any budgets that increased? In this request?
Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the only two that I could think of off the top of my head are Board of Health and Town Clerk.
Uh you you just got the two I was thinking of, yes. You're correct.
Shea, your thoughts? Did I, did I not come through?
Uh no, I had a hard time with hitting the mute button, sorry. So no, I I'm in support of that, I think it'd be important to keep. Operating budget and capital separate as we look at at the percentages. Uh I think that. You know, certainly, the Capital Planning Group has put a lot of work into their, into their efforts, so rather than just focusing on one. Percentage increase. Like if we're committed to that one point seven. So we know that, you know, the total percentage increase, we're in for one point seven. Um so I think as we look at at various percentages and impacts to get, you know, to. Six, five, four, uh for the operating side, um I just think we need to look at keeping those and tracking those separate as we go through this as well.
I'm gonna, I'm going to suggest percentages in a second, but first. Um Brian, I think the other thing that's important, and I think you and Mark realize this, is when we had the presentation last summer. FY twenty two has always been the the big bear in the room, is my recollection. And understanding that, that that fiscal year twenty three. Is going to be a different, hopefully better animal, I think is also important to know. I know you guys put those trends together, but even even earlier in the process for us. Um and but again, more generally, thinking about about um um informing. The folks who are going to ultimately ultimately be making this decision at town meeting. About just how much of an anomaly fiscal year twenty two might be. Now, with that in mind, I guess my recommendation would be to to uh go back, and at this point. Honestly, Brian and Mark, I would, I would leave it to you. Um I don't think we need to, we're not going to, we're not going to shave off. Uh sufficient dollars in this budget with with uh departments or committees with. Ten thousand, twenty five thousand, forty thousand dollar budgets. Um we may need to look at those at some point to see whether or not the spending makes sense. But I guess I would go back to, and I'll leave, I'd leave it to you to determine who those high-ticket. Uh uh departments are and go back to them and find out what their budget would look like at. A, and I understand that 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 some of them aren't even responsible for for any, let alone a lot of the proposed increase. But what their budget would look like with a, if uh. With a two. And a five, I don't know if there's a stomach to go down to a a um. Uh uh a zero increase, but by the same token. That's a, that's a baseline that at least people can understand what the impact would be, so I guess those are, those are. They're not exactly made up, but they're not data-driven either, but but with a two, five, and maybe a zero percent um um increase in the budget. That makes sense, was I clear about that?
Yeah.
Okay, does that make sense to other folks on the board?
And those percentages, are you looking at those from the operating perspective or total? Inclusive of capital, not inclusive?
No, not inclusive of capital. I think cap- capital's just a, yeah, I, no question, the capital group has done an incredible amount of of of. Of work, and we did kick the can down the road on a lot of those items, but, and it's, it's, you know. There's no huge, there's, there's like, you know, twenty um modest capital items that add up to the total capital amount. So even knocking one or two out doesn't have all that much of an impact. Um but I would leave it on the operational side at this point.
Hey Marty. I I would, I would throw in, I'm not sure how much it's worth the work on the zero percent, I mean, I guess personally. I think zero percent. Tax rate increase from the operating side is is too draconian, based on what I've heard so far from discussions with advisory and other places. You know, I mean, I I'm not, I guess, inclined to think that's something that we would realistically consider, although some people certainly may choose to do that, but for me at least. I could live with a two percent and a five percent to bracket it, and give us a good picture of what's going on, so.
Can always do that as a, as a follow-up if it turns out, so if it, what would, what would it look like if if instead of a nine percent increase, we had a two, a five, and maybe a seven? Um instead of zero, two, and five?
For operating?
Operating.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I think that's more real, and frankly, I think the nine we have. And that's unrealistic as well, so I said, I'm sort of in the two to five range myself now. Without enough data to pin it down better.
So Mark and Brian, is that some sufficient enough detail for what what we are thinking, at least on January five? About the, about FY?
I don't know about Brian, but the room feels a little bit heavier now, um um in my screen, I mean, so.
Yeah, I mean.
I just wish I could come to one of these and talk about books.
You are the financial books.
The wrong business.
Um is there anything, you 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 mentioned a number of other things, um Brian, I think we sort of addressed it on the capital side of things, I mean, I think we're just. We're putting capital on a sidebar at this point. But that doesn't mean we're not going to talk about it and think about it, and whether or not there are some items there that that can or should be delayed. Uh but but so, so what to look for in numbers? Um um with the larger departments, number one, number two, capital, put that to the, to the side at this point, you know, to be discussed later down the line. Was there anything else that you wanted uh or hope to get from us tonight?
Uh good opportunity, but no, I think, I think we're clear on our marching orders for tonight.
But Brian, you'd also ask about meeting with advisory, I would be in favor of a sooner. Later meeting with advisory to talk through some of these things to give us a better feel for the next level down a detail.
Um I am looking, I don't, I don't see in our, um I I I'm I'm ready to move on from Brian, does it, does, do other folks have any additional questions for him? All right, I'm seeing it, particularly since there are some members of uh uh advisory out there, just curious as to whether or not there's any, anybody who's in our audience who. Has a comment or a question. Now going once, going twice.
Andrew from advisory is the only one I see.
Yeah, okay, all right, uh seeing none, um Brian, uh as always, thank you very much, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, all right, thank you.
All right. Moving on to um reports, I think at least mine are going to be relatively quick. Saved in, for the first one, the CSX easement question for Main Street. Um um I think everybody saw him as Galligan's email uh today that updated the information from CSX. Um and I I mean, I touched base, that that's the sort of information I was, I was looking for. I mean, it it is, and and I guess two things, number one, Brian, I I. I mean, it, it is, and I guess two things. Number one, Brian, I, I would ask, and I specifically mentioned it, we should make that as Karen's email part of the record. Um, a document is part of the record for our meeting tonight so that it's clear what that updated information from CSX is about their position, conditions, whatever we want to call it, uh, for, for a voluntary easement on the, in the, the Main Street area. I think, and it doesn't have to be on January nineteenth. I'm, I'm not sure how much urgency there is to it. I'm, I'm maybe between now and when we set the agenda for the nineteenth, Mark, you and I can touch base with Karen and get a, an idea of exactly what the timeline would be. But it, I, it just, my view is it's pretty clear from, uh, that, uh, from Karen's email that, that a irresistible force is, is meeting an immovable object when it comes to Main Street. And I think at the end of the day, it's going to be up to us to decide, uh, what is the best of some not particularly attractive choices?
Well, I know that, I'm sorry, I just, just to add on to that, Marty, I know that, um, I did speak with Karen briefly uh, this afternoon and, and as part of that conversation is trying to figure out how much time she needs to get this piece of the project bid so that we can start in the spring, um, or start as early as we can and then hopefully, you know, get everything completed inside of one construction season. So that's the timeline.
Yeah. And I, 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 I don't want to be obtuse about this. That's why I want the email to be made part of the, uh, the, the record, but, but just for purposes of, of, of our discussion, and we saw, we are, we all saw the email. CSX is taking the position that, that in order for us to do the work, that we've been advised by our DPW and, and certainly anecdotally and by our own, um, you know, sets of eyes certainly appears to be necessary, um, in the continuation of, of Main Street towards East Main Street. That, uh, in order for that, for a voluntary easement to be granted for that work, which is necessary to do the work. Um, uh, they are going to be asserting their property rights, which seem, those property rights seem pretty clear to me anyway. Um, and I've, I've not seen any, anything beyond sort of anecdotal or musing that, that indicates that CSX doesn't have the property rights that they say they do down in that area. Um, and it also, and, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, and others maybe interpreted it differently, but it also sounds like CSS, CSX has reached out to the police and said, there are people who are trespassing on our property and we want that addressed. Is that the way other folks read that? Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that is the way that I read it. And I did check with Chief Paulus on that, and he said he has no knowledge of that. So, and I have to imagine even if they happen to reach out to one of the officers or one of the management team, it still would have matriculated up to the chief. So, um, yeah, so he's not aware of that. So I'm not sure, um, how valid that is.
So maybe that threat is aspirational at this point. So, but it's, but it's not an unreasonable, um, it's not an unreasonable threat for a property owner to make. But, um, hopefully it doesn't come to that. So anyway, that's, that, that is the, I think, again, the email is a good summation of where things currently stand with, um, with CXF, CS, CSX, which obviously is a significant landowner in that area. And, uh, uh, as I said, Karen updated us last time on, on the fact that, that it's pretty clear to her as our DPW director that the Main Street needs the work. So that's, that's the report on that. Does anybody other than what's already been said have any additional thoughts or comments? No.
What do you, what do you think the next steps would be? I mean, does it make sense for us to have CSX come in? And I mean, it seems like we need to come to some sort of resolution with them.
Yeah, I'm not, I have them come in. I, I mean, I guess if they, if they were interested in, I guess we could extend the invitation. Um, and I think, I'm not sure that we would get a whole lot more than, than, um, one of the reasons I wanted to, to, and, and Karen reached out. I, I am, I am thinking about following up Karen's phone call with a phone call of my own to someone from CSX and see if I can just flesh out a little bit what they've said. I, I don't think that, I mean, there's, I'm, I'm not sure how beneficial it would be Chelsea to have them actually come in here. I think, I think it's, I I think the communication is going to be a lot, um, freer. Um, if they, if, if, if they're not in a, in a public norm. Uh, that being said, we can certainly extend an invite if, if, uh, uh, think about it, if, if folks thinks it might, it might be, uh, it might be helpful. And, um, Mark, between now and, and next week when we set the agenda, maybe get some, some yet additional information about where things might stand. Um, but, but also the additional information from Karen to see exactly what the timetable would be. Um, but as I said, we're, 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 it's pretty clear to me, we're going to be faced with some unattractive choices here and, uh, are going to have to go with one of them.
Marty, I think that if you do follow up informally, maybe offering, uh, an in-person out of meeting discussion would be useful, but my sense is that's the kind of thing that often makes those guys dig in deeper, feel pressured. And so.
And you get, you get bromides instead of real discussion. So, but, 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 but we'll see. I, I mean, it's, I, I, it's, it's a, it, it may end up being a helpful suggestion. We'll see. Um, but I, I think, I think with that as a, as a possibility, I think my instinct to follow up Karen's communication with them with one of my own, um, is probably the next best step.
I agree.
Okay. Um, second thing on mine is the, um, Comcast, our marijuana dispensary. And I, I dove a little bit into the mass general law and to the, um, contractual documents. And it's the Massachusetts legislature didn't do the cities and towns of Massachusetts any favors. And the, the, the mass general, the applicable mass general law is, you know, it's not been tested. Um, and I think, Mark, you, you confirmed with conversations from, uh, some of our neighboring communities that they don't even have provisions like ours for the fifty thousand dollar payment. And it's interesting what the mass general, the, I mean, the, you know, it was a carefully written letter from the, uh, the lawyer from the dispensary. But the, um, you know, the general law and it's, the general law requires, it appears that there might be some, um, uh, some flexibility in our being take, being able to take the approach that our negotiated contract, I don't want to say trumps the general law, but gives us some additional leverage, um, in light of the general law. What the general law says is that um, even the three percent, which is, which we've been getting on time, um, payments from Comcast, that even that three percent has to be backed up with, um, data from the town indicating that it's incurring, um, uh, expenditures as a result of locating the, um, marijuana dispensary in town. And Mark, I don't, I don't think we have been doing that, have we? In other words, I don't think the police orders. So, um, the statute requires it and the, the, um, the regulations promulgated under the statute require that, that town, my guess is most towns aren't doing that, maybe they are. But that, that strikes me as a necessary prerequisite to our digging in our heels and, and, um, uh, uh, taking a, a, a strong position to, to, to enforce our contractual rights. That we got to make sure that, that our house is in order in terms of identifying the expenditures that, that, that relate to the locating of the dispensary in uh, the town of South Row. And it strikes me that the primary ones are going to be police and, uh, fire, but, but, but maybe others have thoughts where, where, where else we may be sure to look to see if there are additional expenditures that could be tied to locating the, uh, that business here. Any thoughts?
I think youth and family services may be one.
Oh, good point. That's a very good point.
Building department.
Maybe, maybe schools. I'm sorry, Sam.
Building department potentially, or some of the construction work, I don't know.
Okay. So Mark, I'll leave it, I, I'll leave it to you and, and I would be, I would be the opposite of conservative in my, uh, in my thinking and approach to what, um, expenses. But basically we're getting three percent, uh, um, of their gross revenues. In, is it quarterly payments they're making?
It's twice, it's twice a year, once in December, once in June.
So it's, so if it's twice a year, then we've gotten in the, in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars, might be a little bit.
It's roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Hundred thousand dollars a year. I mean, it's not unreasonable to think that we have expenditures that relate to that, to that business being located here that exceed a hundred thousand dollars. And in order for us to, to, to make a strong response to their withholding that fifty thousand dollars in addition to the three percent, we're going to need, I think we're going to need that information.
Marty?
Yes, Sam.
One thing that Mark might consider is you might actually go back to our, our surrounding towns and ask if they're doing it, if they are. You know, what is their calculation for that? Have they found expenses that haven't occurred to us, for example, to see what people are doing with that to get some ideas about it potentially?
So I'm not going to out any towns, um, um, but I will say that, you know, doing a review of information available online, um, I, I found a couple, um, that, that basically detailed out the expenditures. And so there is, um, a little bit of a, a little bit of a blueprint on, on how to, how to do that.
Oh, great. Always good not to have to reinvent the wheel. So good.
Municipalities don't reinvent the wheel. You just take the parts of the wheel that work best for you. So.
All right. Good thought there, Sam.
So, so, and not to be, I mean, not to cast aspersions on people here, but did all these people negotiate these deals with the communities in good faith to get them approved? And then they put a, some pact together to put all these clauses that are in these paragraphs. They went to the legislature and said, hey, these are, these aren't fair.
That, that sounds like an aspersion.
You know.
Is your, is your question, Brian? Does the marijuana lobby have better lobbyists than, than the cities and towns of Massachusetts?
Exactly.
They have more money.
Yeah. Okay. All right, Mark, so all that makes sense?
It does. Yes.
Okay. All right. Final one, um, is, uh, Board of Selectmen office hours, um, which we've not done since we have, did we ever do any? I don't think we ever did any, um, remote office hours, did we?
No, I don't.
But we haven't done them.
No.
So is there an appetite for it? I think, I think, I think it'd be worthwhile at least to, to see if, if, um, um, there are some folks out there who want to bend our ear, not necessarily in person, but, uh, over Zoom.
I'm happy to do it. I think it's a good thing.
So Mark, can you, and Vanessa's on, can you, uh, I mean, we, the way we did it before is we did it in off weeks. And, um, uh, it sounds like Mr. Stivers and Ms. Malinowski volunteered to do it next week.
So that doesn't put us at risk of, and it's not any way related to subcommittees and posting and all that stuff, is it?
No, I mean, that, yeah, I wouldn't think so. There's no deliberation. I mean, it's the same thing that was being done in person. You know, at the townhouse when, when we were open, that people were coming in and, you know, meeting with selectmen, you know, really, you know, not announcing their coming, talking about issues and then you know, um, board members would carry them back to the, you know, to the full board if, if need be.
Not a quorum.
No, and I wouldn't think that it would be, and it's certainly not a dedicated to, you know, subcommittee that we're creating to do office hours. I certainly would envision this to be a rotating, uh, thing.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. And it's, and it's not topic related. It's, it's, um, it's an opportunity. I'd like to think that it's the, 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 the complete opposite of an open meetings problem. It's a, it's a, it's an, an open invitation to anyone to come in and talk to, um, uh, one or two members of the Board of Selectmen. So.
So let, yes, so let me ask you this. I don't know if, if the board is envisioning that Selectmen, Stivers, and Malinowski would meet with somebody, or this would be like old school Catholic confession, and you could either go talk to Selectmen, Stivers, or you could talk to Selectman Malinowski, you know, about the issues. Um, and, you know, obviously we need to set up, you know, we need to set up separate breakout rooms and I can see Vanessa sweating already. Um, so.
I wouldn't go that detail.
When we did it with, and there were two people there, it's not like, you know, they said, no, I only want to talk to Lisa, Marty, you're going to leave.
Step outside.
A lot of people might have felt that way, but no one said it.
Okay.
Are we going to record and post now that we have that capability in Zoom? I mean, it seems like we probably should, I guess, shouldn't we?
Wouldn't I know?
I, I, I wouldn't do, I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, there was no recording when we did it in person, Sam. I keep it as close as possible to what we did in person, which were informal conversations, giving folks an opportunity, as I said, to bend our ear and for us to be informed and carry that information back to the full board for discussion if it's appropriate.
I, I think in the same way that, you know, CSX is going to have a much better conversation offline than they will if they know they're being recorded on camera. If a resident wants to talk to you about something, they're going to be a lot more open and forthcoming if they don't feel that this conversation is being, you know, um, you know, available on YouTube, uh, later on that evening.
They want to complain about one of the selectmen not present at that discussion.
Well, then it's incumbent upon the selectmen to bring those issues back to the full board if that is the request. So.
And the final, the final thing I have for my report is, um, it didn't happen until, uh, yesterday morning. So, uh, and that is I, um, zoomed in, I don't know, what, what's the right verb, whatever it is, um, to the hearing yesterday in Worcester Superior Court, uh, of our, the town of South Row's motion to dismiss the pending complaint that relates to the, uh, was it December eighteen? Um, uh, meeting complaint brought, brought by three or four citizens of the town of South Row. And, uh, Mr. Davis, representative of town of South Row, I thought did an excellent job. I, Sam, you caught, you caught some of it, but not all of it, correct?
Yeah, I did.
Um, I thought he did an excellent job. Not surprisingly, the judge took the matter under, uh, submission. And, you know, I think each of the counts of the complaint, the remaining counts of the complaint, some have already been voluntarily dismissed by plaintiff's counsel. Uh, but the motion to dismiss focuses on, um, on all of the remaining counts, I believe. Mr. Davis did a terrific job presenting arguments on behalf of the, uh, the town. And as I said, the judge, I was, I was impressed that the judge hadn't seen her in action before. And, uh, uh, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic about what the result of the, uh, the hearing might be. Okay. That, that's it for Chair's reports.
You're muted, Marty.
I muted before I stopped talking. Uh, Ms. Malinowski, anything?
Yes. So, um, I am honored to speak about two, um, veterans. Um, Mr. Arthur Holmes passed away last Monday, December twenty-eighth, um, at ninety-two years old. He was an Army, um, World War Two veteran. Um, and he has a lengthy, um, number of years, um, of service to the town of South Row. So I'm just going to briefly go over those, um, because it's very impressive. So he was appointed, appointed to the Board of Assessors in nineteen sixty-four until nineteen eighty-three. And in nineteen eighty-three, he was named the first full-time, um, assessor in the town of South Row. And he held that position until he retired in nineteen ninety-nine. And at that time, he received, uh, accommodations from both the mass legislature and the Board of Selectmen, um, for the town of South Row. Um, after his retirement from, uh, as the assessor, he was elected back to the Board of Assessors in two thousand. And, um, at the age of ninety was, um, reelected to his fourteenth term, um, on the board. And he served the town of South Row, um, on the assessors' side for fifty-six years. Um, he also served on several associations, um, in various capacities, um, throughout his tenure. Um, and I actually had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Holmes, um, a few weeks ago. Um, so I feel very honored that I got to meet him. Um, so we just, on behalf of the board, I just wanted to send our condolences to his family um, and thank them for letting us use him for so many years. Um, the second, um, gentleman that I'm going to speak about is Mr. Arthur Butler. And he's also a World War Two Army veteran, um, in the US Army Tech Four Sergeant. And he is celebrating his hundredth birthday on Friday. He's a longtime, um, South Row resident who has recently moved out of town. Um, but he, um, participated in the invasion of Okinawa, um, earning the Combat Infantry Badge, the Bronze Star Medal, and the Purple Heart. So there'll be a, um, drive-through parade for him. I believe Marlboro, um, Public Service or, um, Police and Fire will be leading that as well as some members from South Row, um, Public Safety, and that will be held on Friday. Um, and the town will be doing a Um, and the town will be doing a proclamation for him. So I just wanted to wish him a happy birthday and recognize, um, his service.
And, um, and others may wanna, I mean, I think, you know, anybody who's been in Southborough for more than ten or fifteen minutes encountered Mr. Holmes. And, uh, he was a, he was a, a, a gracious, um, uh, affable, um, um, you know, just terrific guy to work with, um, in whatever capacity. So he's obviously somebody, uh, who, who very much will be missed. I don't think I've had the pleasure of meeting, uh, the, 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 it sounds like, geez, a, a war hero, um, not just somebody who, who served in World War II. Um, but obviously congratulations on him, I'm making it to a hundred. Uh, again, talk about aspirational. So anybody else have any thoughts about you, the two gentlemen?
I'd, I'd comment about Arthur Holmes. I'd worked with him in variety capacities over many years and, uh, uh, wonderful guy, a great asset to the town, a dedicated public servant, and, uh, clearly will be missed.
I'll just make one comment about Arthur. I had a chance to, to meet Arthur before I came to Southborough, um, at various meetings and everything, and more just introduced to him. And, um, I was in Ashland and, and, uh, he set up an appointment with me. And he came over and he just wanted to let me know that the town administrative position was going to be open soon, and he really expected that I would be applying for it. And, and looked forward to, you know, uh, hopefully working with me in the future. Um, uh, he, he was, he was very dedicated to the assessors. He worked in several communities. He was always willing to help anybody out. And, um, he's as famous for his chili parties, uh, as he is for his assessors' work. Every year, you know, he would have this amazing garden and all the fruits of the garden would be, you know, collected and put into this amazing chili, which he would come in and he would share with the townhouse, uh, staff every year. And it was, never got old when Arthur would, um, you know, take the time to tell everybody the story that you had heard every year before about how they make the chili, how much goes into it and everything. And so, um, he's gonna be missed on, on so many levels.
Jay, anything? You're, you're having trouble with your butt today?
No, nothing to add, nothing to add. There, um.
And no report?
No report.
Okay, Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Um, I was, wanted to ask for the, uh, the grant topic on here. Um, I apologize for sounding like a broken record, but I've been following the, uh, um, federal legislation that just got passed, as well as the new state legislation, not, uh, related to COVID. And we've seen, uh, recently notice about this, uh, state grant for electric charging stations. And I continue to believe that, uh, it is a huge opportunity for us to find a way to find resources to hire on a part-time basis, a grant-focused person to find ways to support not only, uh, the COVID stuff, but some of the capital things that we've been talking about here as well. And, uh, I know that there are towns, I think Lowell just issued an RFP for a consulting contract for a group to help them do a comprehensive, uh, review and application process for funds from all sources to support, uh, town finances. They're struggling like everybody else is. So I don't think we need to go to that extent, certainly, but I gotta believe there are people out there who have experience, uh, either in state or federal agencies on the, the, uh, donating end of this grant money, who could be very influential and helpful to find some places. And I think we could, uh, highlight three or four areas as a board that, uh, says, here is places where we think there's money and we would urge focus to go out and find money, uh, over the next six months or so here while there's money flowing. I think regardless of how today's election in Georgia turns out, there's gonna be a lot of money flowing with the new administration coming in in Washington to support infrastructure projects. And again, I think there's an opportunity for us to be, uh, uh, prepared and focused to apply for some of those funds. And, um, um, again, it's something that I think there are people who have expertise in this area and providing a reasonable amount of money. I'm just making up numbers, but you could hire somebody for nineteen hours a week for a few months here to, uh, focus on that for thirty thousand bucks or something like that, I would guess. And there may be residents in town who actually come out of that background and for whatever reason, have extra time nowadays to, to do that. So I would urge us to seriously consider finding a way to, uh, explore that and make something happen there, cause I think there's real fiscal relief there, at least in the near to intermediate term. So that's my speech.
Stivers, when, 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 when we were working on the, um, Main Street project, um, if not every meeting, every other meeting, I would, I would rant about the sidewalk from Main Street down to the Woodward School on the community house side and say what a terrible idea I thought it was. And another member of the, of our committee, Mr. Shay, would tell me how wrong I was. And he finally wore me down and, and, uh, uh, that sidewalk, which should have been built, wasn't fact built. I bring that up because you finally worn me down on this old rant thing. And so I guess.
That's a jern.
What's that?
That's a jern. Well, I, again.
Um, and I guess, Mark, what, what, what? Is there, is there money currently, um, in the, in the budget from whatever source to, to do what Mr. Stivers is describing between now and the end? And, and one of the main things is, is, you know, the, um, covering the COVID expenses has been re-upped, and we talked about that last time. Um, and again, I, I, I think our view is, certainly my view is, that in the same way that we should be as aggressive as possible, again, the opposite of conservative in identifying, um, you know, COMCAN-related expenses, we should be, you know, uber-aggressive about identifying, you know, um, any expense that the town may have incurred as a result of the pandemic. Um, and again, if we, if we put in and, and however the process works and they say no, fine, we, we're spending that money anyway. Um, but, but I think we should be asking, and I'm just wondering if combining, you know, the grant approach that Mr. Stivers is talking about, with somebody, you know, specifically designated to, to root out whatever potential reimbursement sums there are in the, uh, on the pandemic side of things, might be a very useful use of, of, uh, of the town's money for a part-time position, if the money's there.
Well, I mean, we're not, we don't have money budgeted for a part-time position if you're asked. Yeah, I mean, if you're asking me to go into the budget and see if we can find money to bring somebody in, you know, for fifteen hours a week or, 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 you know, or less, or, um, you know, for some, some contract terms to try to do something like that, you know, that we can do that. Um, you know, the, the, you know, we are getting, you know, all the notifications. Sam mentioned the EV grant. And, um, I've already been in contact with John Parent, you know, to, um, you know, to, to talk about that, gave him some thoughts on, on, on how that possibly could be used. You know, it's, a lot of the grants aren't difficult, um, you know, to, to do. Um, it's simply, it's simply, you know, being aware of them and, and getting them done. You know, there are some, um, requirements, some, some prerequisites for some of them. Um, I think that, um, conservation, you know, has spearheaded, uh, the MVP, um, grant, um, which basically is one of the things that, you know, gives you a step up into, you know, some of the other, um, grant programs. But, um, you know, I, I don't know. Uh, I, I need to have a little more of a conversation to determine the value of spending, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars and, and figuring out what the return would be versus doing it, um, doing it, you know, based on staff and based on direction. Yeah, there was another grant that came out talking about, um, there was, it was public works and economic development-driven, um, you know. So like I said, I, I think we can evaluate that a little bit more. And if the board wants us to find the money inside this budget, I think, you know, we could probably identify, you know, some opportunities to do so.
Ms. Malinowski, your thoughts?
Yeah, so I would say that Sam hasn't worn me down yet on this one. I, um, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think that we need, and, and Mark, you can probably speak to this a little bit more than I can, but, um, if the department heads are coming to us and saying, I can't get to applying to this grant, I know I wanna apply for it, or I missed this grant because I wasn't aware of it, and I should have applied for it, I think then we're, we're talking about maybe needing a grant writer. But I know we have residents in town who have volunteered to write grants, who have successive, successfully written grants in other towns. And I think until we exhaust those efforts and we have a plan for what a grant writer is gonna write grants for, I don't think it's a good use of town money. I think we need to rely on our department heads to identify if that's really a gap that we have today. And, a- and Sam, I'm not saying that we're not applying for things that we should be, but I think we need to be pushing for the department heads to be more aware and, and hold them accountable to apply for these grants. I, like Mark said, I don't think that these are difficult to apply for. And I think if we, if we are strategic about applying for them, then we will reap the benefits of that.
And Chelsea, I agree with you. I think the primary focus ought to be on department head awareness of grant opportunities in their particular area, areas of service. But I see this as sort of a backup safety net kind of thing. For example, uh, we totally missed out on the big VW diesel engine exhaust, uh, pollution, uh, award that, uh, US government, US, uh, localities got, Westboro got a two hundred thousand dollars worth of dump trucks out of that thing. And, uh, there are other surrounding towns who got substantial capital boosts from that, and we weren't aware of it. So I think that, you know, our department heads have got departments to run. They don't have the capacity to keep their antenna up all over the place for those kind of things, and they will miss some of those things, not because they're not looking, but just because they don't have the time to focus on it. So I see this as sort of a backup mechanism to add, uh, assurance that we'll catch more of those opportunities. So I don't think it's an either or, it's a combination thing. But, uh, you know, again, I offer it, and if there's not support, I understand. I got one board, one and a half now with Marty, one point six.
Brian?
Uh. You know, and I think I, I agree with, you know, a lot of points that have been made, you know, by, um, you know, both, both Chelsea and Sam on this. I, I think that I would, you know, certainly not ready to, you know, if we have, if we can find the money to make an, or aggressive effort to, to get grants within the budget that we have, you know. Certainly, uh, and we can't s- start with having come off the, uh, the budget hearing for FY twenty-two, and everybody wanting to decrease, now looking to be add, adding thirty thousand for a position to, uh, to, to chase the grant, so.
Part-time and it goes away, though.
True, true, so.
Yeah, nothing ever really goes away, Sam. The hours just get reassigned someplace else, so.
That's, that's management, Mark.
Yeah, no, I, uh, look, I, 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 I understand, I understand. I think it would be interesting. I know that Carla has out reports basically showing what we get for grants on a yearly basis. I think there's a lot of things that the board may not be aware of. And, and I think what I'm gonna do is I'll pu- put together a report for the past couple of years, so you get an idea. I know some of them are grants that we get, you know, um, um, by right in terms of some of the Council on Aging Grants that come down and everything and that. But, you know, there, there is, you know, you know, probably, you know, between seven and eight hundred thousand dollars and things that, you know, that we do, um, you know, we do end up with, that I think the board, you know, should be aware of. It's the, but I know this, Sam, you're probably, you know, you're looking at the big-ticket items. Um, but I think that, you know, a lot of the smaller pieces, you know, that we do get, you know, add up to some, you know, some significant funds.
I'm not certainly dismissing those, and I'm not suggesting that we don't get a significant, uh, push from grant money. I'm simply saying that we're at a point in time here when there is huge opportunity from two directions, one COVID and second new political administration in Washington, that is probably not gonna come around again in the near future, certainly from the pand- pandemic side, I hope. Uh, so there will be people who, you know, strike while the iron is hot here, and I would hope that we could be.
And, and I, and I think, and I think the board has set themselves up well. Several meetings ago, you committed several hundred thousand dollars in Chapter Ninety money to, um, to get plans, you know, um, shovel-ready, so that when those opportunities come, hopefully sometime in the next six months, we're ready. We have projects that are ready to go. We just need the funding source. So I think that, you know, we've started to, to do some of the things that the board talked about, you know, to be ready for those opportunities.
And I guess here's my, uh, uh, Mark, two things. Number one, um, um, it would be helpful to see, um, if for a, what would it be, about a five-month period, if money were available, where it would come from. And number two, it's, it's, uh, it's good to hear that, that it, it's not gonna be that difficult to basically accumulate data on what we've done the last two, three years in terms of grants. And, and here, I guess, is what swayed me, is right now, we don't have anything to compare that to. It would be interesting if we did it as an experiment for a five-month period and see if there was a spike in the additional grant money we got. Now, if there weren't, and, you know, we, we've, we've got data that shows we're already getting good return on grants, then, um, uh, then there's no need to, to extend beyond five months or so. But if it turns out that, that, um, you know, there are grants sitting under rocks that, that, that our department heads who do have, you know, obviously their main responsibility is to run their departments and just aren't aware of or aren't able to get to, um, uh, then, you know, it's worth the town's money. That, that's, that's, I guess, the five-month, six-month, whatever it is, risk that I, I feel comfortable taking, at least right now. Okay? So again, we'll, we'll get that additional data and, and to be discussed further down the line.
That's it for me, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Town Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, quickly, um, just updating you on the Board of Health, uh, staffing, um, and the, the Public Health Director status. Um, so, um, we have, we, we had a clarifying opinion, um, from Town Council that essentially um, recognized the, uh, the contracting authority of the Board of Health, um, for services and employees under, um, under their MGL statute. And, um, the Board of Health has, uh, met, um, last week, and they, um, voted to, uh, so, uh, let me back up. Mr. Pazinski has, um, has, uh, resigned, um, from his current position as, um, as Public Health Director. Uh, he is, the Board of Health did approve a new contract for him, um, to, um, uh, at no more than six hours a week at the discretion of the Board of Health and, um, the, uh, the new interim Public Health Director to come back and help to provide a bridge and, and, um, some historical perspective and continuity, um, for the, um, the interim Health Director. The board also approved an interim Health Director contract, um, uh, at nineteen and a half hours a week, beginning on January eleventh. Um, and, and these con- and that contract is subject to funding, um, which they are on the agenda for the Advisory Committee tomorrow night and will, um, you know, be seeking, uh, approximately thirty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars in order to fund that interim contract, which would run from January eleventh until June thirty, again, nineteen and a half hours. Um, the woman, uh, that they have selected, um, she is a doctor. Um, she is focused on the public health side of things, not environmental health, um, which is Mr. Pazinski's specialty. And, um, and, you know, hopefully that is gonna, you know, make for, uh, a nice transition. The public health nurse, our current nurse, Emily, is going to be resigning, uh, in February, and at that point, we would be looking to, um, to replace that position. Um, there has been conversations about whether it's gonna be um, at a full-time level or at a part-time level, but I don't think that that, um, that has been, uh, determined yet. So we are moving forward. I think if Board, uh, if it, uh, Advisory Committee approves the funding request tomorrow night, um, and, and this is gonna be viewed a little bit like, they're not approving the request, but they're basically, um, you know, saying that we agree with the request, but we're gonna hold it in abeyance until June and see where you are, because, uh, the town accountant has had, um, a number of conversations, and another one as recently as today, with the state to talk about eligible expenses for CARES Act. And this may be, um, these additional hours may be something that is eligible for reimbursement. Hopefully, we won't need the reserve fund transfer request. Uh, and so in the same way that, um, that, uh, Ms. Malinowski and Ms. Braccio had basically set up the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as a backstop for the Rent and Mortgage Assistance Program in case, you know, the CARES funding didn't come through, or FEMA didn't come through, that, uh, Advisory, I think, is setting up the reserve fund in the same manner, if in fact, these additional hours are not covered under any of the COVID programs. So that's the, uh, that's the update on Board of Health.
Mark? Go ahead, Chelsea, you have a question.
Um, Sam, um, do you know what currently has been requested from Advisory for a reserve fund? Like, do you know?
I don't, I believe it's, I'm sorry, I believe it's, uh, it what, in terms of prior?
How many requests they've gotten year-to-date for reserve fund transfers? Do you know the balance?
One request from the fire department regarding the radio systems. I think I brought that to the board, so you understood. The request is, it's the same vein as this one. It's not been, it's been acknowledged, it's been held in abeyance for June. Um, the request. Um, the request pretty much wipes out the radio maintenance line and the Fire Department budget. If things roll right, maybe it can be accommodated within the expenses for the year, and you don't need the Reserve Fund Transfer, but it's on Advisory's radar. That, I believe, is the only one that I'm aware of that's formally been made at this point.
Okay, thanks.
So, Mark, just just to clarify, so I understand, it sounds like then, uh, Board of Health is now cleared to go ahead with the contracting mandate under the MGL 111, whatever, in terms of authorizing their autonomy to do that, and Town Council's on board with that.
Yes.
Well, thanks.
So, and thanks to Vanessa for helping to um, to kind of shepherd that process, shepherd that process forward. The one, um, I, there's one other piece, and I'm going to turn it over to Vanessa on on Board of Health. I'm just, it's still Board of Health, so I think it's still covered under the posting item. Um, but I do want to note that um, the uh, the Vaccination Distribution Plan and the application to the state um, is is in process of being finalized. I finalized my piece of it um, earlier um, this week. And hopefully, um, the Board of Health will finish their piece, uh, and and that will be submitted hopefully sometime in the, in the very near future, hopefully by the end of the week. Um, so that's in process. But we also have another uh, another option um, for um, for providing a vaccination clinic. Uh, and um, and Ms. Hale sat in on a conference, uh, conference call this week. I just wanted her to update the board on on that aspect.
Sure, thank you. So last week, there was a um, very preliminary conversation over Zoom with Bing Yo from the AFC Clinic. He's the Managing Director of AFC, um, which is the medical clinic we use quite often out of Marlborough, as well as Natick. Um, and the discussion was um, relative to AFC hosting um, a vaccine clinic, you know, for the Town of Southborough, which Bing is very interested in doing. Again, it was a very preliminary conversation because he still does not know, as I checked in a few hours ago, as of today, he still does not know when he will start receiving vaccine distribution. Um, but the conversation was with myself, Leslie Chamberlain from the um, Council on Aging, who of course was our prior Board of Health Nurse. She ran many of our flu clinics for the last several years, so she's very familiar with that process, as well as Chief Achilles in Board of Health staff, um, including Mary Lou Woodford, um, the Chair of the Board of Health. So those conversations are going on. We talked a lot about the logistics of how that clinic would be set up. Um, what AFC would take on for us would be not only providing the vaccine, but um, partial staffing of the clinic, of the the whole registration process, taking care of the insurance approvals and so forth. Um, entry into the the Mass Department of Public Health database. So that whole administrative piece, um, AFC is is willing to take on for us. You know, we would be the host, you know, in Southborough. Um, so, um, that's kind of where things stand right now. We wanted to update the board that, um, it's looking good in those conversations with AFC, but still waiting for final confirmation of when we could proceed with any plans.
I think the one thing I will add to that, thank you, Vanessa, the one thing I will add to that is, in terms of the vaccine, again, it is, it's all dependent on who gets what and who gets it when. Uh, I think we're hedging our bets a little bit by trying to see what we can do um, with with AFC and also applying for for vaccine, you know, on our own through the Town of Southborough, through this vaccination plan submission. So if we get the vaccine and they don't, I still believe AFC is going to come in and and willing to, you know, to run the clinic for us. Um, so they would handle that, and that's huge, to handle logistical part of it. So um, that's, you know, that's kind of where we we stand on on the everything Board of Health at this point. No questions? Excellent. Uh, one final item. Um, I will, uh, just give the board an update. Um, and this is, this is something you're already well aware of. Uh, we had, um, uh, we've had several public records requests regarding recreation. Um, and, um, you know, there has been, when when this situation first first arose, um, you know, um, you know, many months ago, um, you know, the uh, the Board um, had made the decision to, um, you know, to protect the confidentiality of the personnel matter, um, you know, when it had occurred. And, um, the, you know, the the continued public records requests that came in and everything and that, and I think that this board has, um, you know, uh, committed itself to to more transparency. And so, uh, earlier this week, um, we released, um, uh, the remaining records that were being requested, namely, the unredacted police report, and there were some uh, unredacted credit card receipts. Um, and so, um, to the uh, the best of my knowledge, I believe that all of the information, um, you know, and the documents that had been requested, um, have been released. Uh, so I I think that, you know, that there is a, you know, a full and a full and a fair understanding um, of of what had, uh, what had occurred, um, um, you know, regarding regarding recreation. So I just want to update the board on that.
Thanks, Mark. And I will just say, and I I I think I have some 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 license here, because I was not um, a member of the Board when, um, these events happened in the Recreation Department. Um, and why I think that that the discussions we've had about um, uh, being as transparent as possible in in uh, disclosing in minutes, whatever it is, because in this instance, the the um, the process worked the way it should work, which is, an audit identified that there was misconduct by an employee of the Town of Southborough that was caught. Um, the Town of Southborough then took steps to address that misconduct. Um, those steps included both internal, um, civil, if you will, uh, administrative steps to, again, identify by the scope of the misconduct, make sure that the town was not out any um, money as a result of this, that misconduct. When it was determined that there was some money that had been, um, misappropriated by an employee of the Town of Southborough, two things happened. Number one, um, the employee attempted to resign. The Board of Selectment did not allow that to happen. They terminated the employment, which was the appropriate thing to do. Uh, and number two, the town made sure, the 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 uh, the Department and the Town, uh, the Board of Selectment made sure that the town was made whole. There was reimbursements of any money that were improperly misappropriated by the town employee. In addition, on the non-civil, the criminal side, the town referred the matter through the Police Department to the um, Office of the District Attorney, for reasons I cannot comprehend. Apparently, the decision of the District Attorney was that if you reimburse funds that are stolen, you then can't have someone be criminally prosecuted. It's absurd. If that, in fact, was the reasoning by the District Attorney's Office, it's ridiculous. Again, I I've done criminal prosecution for decades, and and that would mean bank robbers, if they got to the bank uh, uh, before they were, you know, put in handcuffs and and gave the money back, that they hadn't committed a crime. That means somebody who who embezzled money from their employer or from a bank or otherwise, if they returned, if they cut a check for the amount they embezzled, that somehow they weren't guilty of the crime of having taken the money, the money in the first place. So again, that that's a decision that it wasn't made by the town. The town made the correct decision to refer it for possible criminal prosecution. The District Attorney's Office made what I think is a is a difficult-to-defend decision not to prosecute because the town had demanded reimbursement of the time of the of the sums that had been misappropriated. So anyway, that's my mini rant about the fact that the town acted properly here. Um, and, um, in in maybe being um, uh, too considerate and deciding that it was going to take some steps to protect the 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 privacy and the employment status of the individual who misappropriated the money. Um, it it was not as transparent at the um, beginning as it could have been. But in fact, everything the town did here, um, should be applauded as the correct steps um, to identify improper misconduct and to deal with it when it's identified. So, those are my thoughts. That, is that it for your report, Mr. Town Administrator?
That's it for my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Um, consent agenda, this will be quick, right?
Always.
And and Vanessa, maybe you could email Lisa and see if she is feeling well enough to participate in the.
Yep, I just, I just text, I just texted her, so.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. All right, so are there any holes on the consent agenda items? All right, I will quickly then um, move to approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, and C.
Second.
Discussion, none. Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shay?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye, unanimously approved.
Clearly, Ms. Braccio has been the holdup on the consent agenda then.
You're really brave, Sam, with her not here, but yeah.
There'll be minutes of this meeting.
Maybe we should elect her chairman or something here.
Uh, all right, uh, other matters properly before the board. Uh, the zoning bylaw for the Downtown Initiative, and have you heard back from Lisa? Do we know whether or not she's going to join us?
I don't have anything back from her yet.
All right, let's assume that she's not. When she called me earlier today to tell me that she wasn't going to be able to make it, obviously, she's been our primary point person on the the Downtown Zoning Initiative. Um, and, uh, her suggestion, which I think is a good one, um, is that right now there are two documents. There's a um, a draft that included the consultants' comments and a redline version that Lisa put together, um, incorporating the the, so it was the, an original draft, the consultants' comments, and then, um, Lisa incorporating, um, comments by this board, as well as other participants, and the consensus that that I think we had reached uh, on various items at our sort of omnibus meeting, um, in November. The second document is Adam Costa, a second consultant's um, uh, comments about the the, uh, the draft that is redlined. Um, those have not been merged into a single document yet. Um, and so as a result, we haven't had an opportunity to see it as one document, as well as the world, the general public. And so the suggestion, and I think it's a good one, is for us to consider and possibly vote to approve the draft as redlined. Um, and also to go through Mr. Costa's comments, um, if there are any specific items that we want to address. Um, and if there are, pass both the comments, Mr. Costa's comments, and any additional comments we have on his on to Ms. Braccio to then be consolidated to a single document that we can consider at our January 19th meeting. Long paragraph, does that make sense?
It's pretty messy, though, Marty. I mean, I worked through both documents myself, and putting them together, I found to be a challenge, and some of the things, again, are not, uh, as I recall that we agreed on. My memory may be incorrect. I think there are still a lot of moving parts to this one, so.
I think there are.
I think generally, um, I'm supportive of most of what Adam Costa did from a structural standpoint. I think he made a lot of good suggestions. I think there are still some issues relative to the details in the redline that Lisa and Judy Barrett had that are worth discussing, but I guess, overall, my main interest is actually keeping it moving. So I'm not, I'm not eager to have long arguments about, you know, should the FAR be .45 or .50? As opposed to getting something that, uh, we could move forward with with the Planning Board that is generally correct, and we've got an opportunity to make tweaks to it to the Planning Board hearings or other places down the road here.
Well, I think, Sam, what the 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 idea would be to to, again, and and Ms. Braccio, Ms. Connolly from the EDC, and um, uh, the the consultant, um, is to, is to, for us to 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 move the ball forward from where we are right now, is to, is, and and in fact, if if folks are comfortable with this, my motion would be for us to approve the redlined version of that that's been provided by Ms. Braccio. Um, and with that approved redline version, for Mr. Costa's comments to be incorporated into those um, for presentation as a single document for our January 19th meeting. When we can vet off of one document as opposed to multiple documents.
Second.
That sounds fine.
All right, discussion?
So on the FAR, I thought where we landed was .35 by right and .5 by special permit. I don't see that in either document under number six.
That didn't make it, in my view, either. But again, if we do Marty's suggestion, we can do that kind of update.
Okay.
Off of a of a single document, which I think would be a whole lot easier to work with, because, again, I had a lot of trouble back and forth.
I just wanted to make sure that that I didn't write that down wrong, because that seems like a big, that was a big discussion point with Planning Board, so I just want to make sure we're not going to bring a document forward that, um, that we didn't agree to. So I, that was just one thing that I noticed, um, that I didn't see in either document.
All right, well, why don't I amend my motion then to include um, a specific reference to including that information in the the consolidated document that we get for our January 19th meeting?
Okay.
Again, I think there are another handful of other nits and nats, like the the kennels and the vet offices and so forth, that didn't come out like I thought we'd approved to, but we can deal with that later.
That's the motion that's been seconded. We've now discussed it. Uh, all in favor? Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shay?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. All right, and Lisa, um, uh, we hope you're doing better, and we'll see you on the 19th. All right, next up, discussion of policies and practices for boards and committees. I actually think this will be relatively quick as well. Um, the the code of conduct, it's interesting, because what we have this code of conduct, we being the Board of Selectment, that was adopted in in 2016, and basically, it's kind of a composite document that pulls together um, various statutory requirements, um, uh, town requirements, sort of best practices requirements into a single, um, document. Um, and the code of conduct was, the issue was raised because of some perceived looseness, maybe in the way, um, some, um, virtual meetings may be um, being handled. I look back at the policy we adopted, having to do with these virtual meetings, and they deal almost entirely with the technical side of things. Um, and so, the the reason I put this on here is, is whether whether or not we think that that we need to, again, I think there has been some looseness and, um, uh, you know, some of it's unavoidable, you know, it's 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 hard for everybody to be working out of their homes, and there not to be some potential for background noise, whether it's kids or pets or otherwise. Um, but I think there has been some lackness, and whether or not simply talking about it, and and I know, Mark, you communicated to boards and sent them the the code. That's enough. Um, um, you know, is there an appetite for for maybe incorporating some additional, um, um, thoughts, requirements, et cetera, into this document? Um, so I I, that's why it's on the agenda, and I guess just generally folks' thoughts on that. Uh, Ms. Malinowski?
So, I think in comparing our code of conduct to some other towns, it it looks to me like that's a pretty standard code of conduct. So I think if we, I think your point about the um, Zoom meetings or remote meetings, I think maybe we include something like that, uh, you know, so some sort of decorum into that policy, or actually have a separate decorum policy. So I think either way, um, because I do think different things are coming up in this Zoom environment that weren't necessarily happening, um, in for in-person meetings.
Marty, you're on mute. Brian's on mute.
Oh, Brian, no, Marty's not on mute. He's just.
I thought I, did I, I thought I said Mr. Shay.
I didn't hear it. If you did, I apologize.
I'm sorry, God.
You know, Lisa not being here is just messing up my timing. You know, if anything, I think, you know, if maybe in the first paragraph, or just somewhere in here, just so it's clear, that this policy applies to meetings, you know, both in-person and in-virtual, and and really, the the rule that everybody should be looking at, you know, if there's action that you wouldn't take if you were meeting and conducting the meeting at the townhouse. if there's action that you wouldn't take if you were meeting and conducting the meeting at the townhouse and you shouldn't also be doing it through Zoom as well, you know, that's that's the common sense approach to it and so.
Mr. Stivers?
And yeah, I I agree with Brian's point strongly. I think the the rule is if you, again, didn't do it at meetings at the townhouse, you shouldn't be doing it. To me, is disrespectful for people to be eating supper while we're having the meeting here that they wouldn't. It sends a message that you're not taking it as seriously as you should be and people have done well with that in in-person meetings. And I think it's useful to reinforce that with Zoom meetings. I also think that there's a lack of clarity in the policy as written because it wasn't, I think, sufficiently clear that that applies to volunteers as well as town compensated employees. And I think it's worth rethinking a little bit of that in terms of sending that message. We're clearly there and there are some redundancies in there as well. So I didn't think it was structured all that strongly. But again, I think it's useful to add decorum for the remote meetings piece specifically, given that we're probably going to continue that for a while. And even after the pandemic is over, there may be more remote meetings in our future.
Okay, I guess maybe two things. Number one, let me, I will volunteer myself to to dive into the code of conduct policy and because I agree with you, Sam, I think there are there's some clarity that can be brought to the to the or better clarity that can be brought to the document. And I think, Chelsea, your point about about putting in some items about decorum and specifically addressing it to the to the virtual environment along the lines that both Brian and and Sam have indicated. So that's number one. Number two, and there was a question when Mark sent this out to the to the various boards and committees about whether or not our view was that it applied to whether it was volunteers or folks who weren't appointed by the Board of Selectment. And I guess my view is I mean, it's the purpose of the policy isn't to it's 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 isn't for it to be penal. But but this isn't one that isn't just aspirational. This is one that that folks really should try to adhere to. And if boards and committees that aren't appointed appointed by the Board of Selectment want to adopt their own you know, code of conduct or otherwise, but I would at least expect that something like what's been adopted by the Board of Selectment certainly in the absence of something specific that's been adopted by another board committee is at least the a strong guideline for how they should be conducted themselves.
Agreed.
Was there something specific that was referenced that they didn't want to adopt or wanted to add to this? Because I mean,
No, I think it was I think it was a turf battle that, yeah, I think it was.
Okay. I mean, it seems to me that we would kind of want to all operate under a standard code of conduct regardless of, I mean, we're all working for the same goal, right? So I think I didn't see that. I don't think I saw the email that went out, but if there's any feedback that we can take to incorporate something, I think we'd be open to that.
Yeah, I think I think what I would try to do in 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 playing around with a with a drafting is to indicate something along those lines. Again, if if some board or committee wants to adopt something even stricter, God bless them. But but I agree that that there shouldn't be, well, no, you 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 we were appointed by X or or, you know, we're 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 separately elected. I mean, this is not, again, this is not us, you know, trying to come down with some sort of penal, you know, statute or regulation for for employees or volunteers. It's 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 trying to come up with a standard that we all can try to adhere to.
I think it's a matter of respect for the town and for the job. People take the job seriously because it is a serious job at any level in the structure.
No, I agree. Ms. Hale?
I just wanted to add one additional comment. I think it would be a great time to look at the remote participation policy that the board adopted quite some time ago. You know, whenever Mark or I are on a Zoom call with state officials, you know, especially the lieutenant governor, there is always a question about, are you going to allow us to continue to meet remotely? You know, meet virtually rather, you know, after our town and city halls are open again. That's really what folks want to continue at some level when it's appropriate. So that remote participation policy is so outdated now that we're in a virtual meeting environment. So I think that might be someplace else that language could be enhanced as well.
Okay, I'll take a look at that. Mike, I'm on I'm on muted. I'll take a look at that as well.
So Vanessa, if you could send Marty all three of those documents, policies, thank you.
So one other thing that I've noticed, and I'm not sure that this is the appropriate policy to address it under, but it's there seems to be a lot of confusion or inconsistencies when boards and committees are conducting remote meetings on when they need to take a roll call, if they need to take a roll call. And and just making sure that kind of the proper procedures are being followed. So I'm not sure, Vanessa, if you have a good suggestion on kind of where we can refresh that.
We can probably find something maybe through the MMA or one of their groups that a number of communities put out sort of like a list, list of tips and, you know, instructions for running virtual meetings. So I think we could probably find something that we could share within our South Borough organization.
So I think Tom had put kind of that checklist together and distributed it right to the chairs. I think we have the content. I just mean adding it to a specific policy. I don't think it lives in the code of conduct policy.
It does not, no.
Somewhere, but is do you have a suggestion for what policy we should maybe look at in inserting that into?
Probably the virtual meeting policy.
I I think, yeah, that probably the virtual one is more of a catchall for the environment we're living in right now and may continue to you know, inhabit at some level.
Yeah, maybe with some some hopefully minor revisions, migrating it entirely into the remote participation might make the most sense. Because I agree with you, there is no way, in fact, I I've got a I've I've got a a breakfast conference with one of the federal judges next Wednesday, I think, where she's going to discuss the how the number of things that have been implemented since March in the federal courts that are going to survive the reopening of the courts. And the same thing is true. I mean, there's no way that that there isn't going to be remote, these sort of meetings, or at least this potential for these sort of meetings after the pandemic finally lifts itself. So.
One other thing that is of interest potentially is it would be great if we could figure out a way to have a pre-recorded version of the governor's notice that whoever is responsible for the meeting could simply play the tape at the beginning of the meeting. So that announcement comes through automatically because people, many people struggle with that. Marty is a pro of it. But many people struggle with that with the HTTP backslash backslash.
And I want to time myself. I want to see if I get every every time, I want to see if I can go do it a little faster.
Like like that old FedEx commercial guy who do the FedEx commercial in 14 seconds.
All right. So anyway, that's on my that's on my to-do list. I don't think I'll be able to get it by the 19th, but maybe one of our our first February meeting. The AG opinion, this is just, again, I think we're doing a pretty good job. Again, the AG opinion is the one that basically said that you can't simply say chairs update, members update, town administrator update, if you have an idea what it is that's going to be talked about. And it's a good, it seems to be a good faith standard. I think we pretty quickly have you know, adjusted. It's just number two things. Number one, to keep it on our radar. And for instance, Lisa asked me about the the discussion about Mr. Holmes tonight, for instance, and whether or not, you know, that hadn't been noted on the the agenda. And it's pretty clear to me that the the AG's opinion is that if an item if an item is likely to engender discussion by the board, that it really needs to be listed as opposed to just, you know, under the general update. But if it's something like like you know, noting an event that's coming up or acknowledging an achievement by somebody or, you know, offering condolences at somebody's passing who was who was a particularly excuse me, important person in the town, that even if there's follow-up to the to the to the to the notice or otherwise, that's really not discussion of a policy issue or something like that. So those are not the sort of things that we have to worry about including on the agendas. But we should be mindful of, if for instance, something you brought up tonight, Sammy, the the possibility of a grant, the three things that that I listed, those are things that are likely to engender discussion by the board. And as a result, they need to be listed on the agenda. But this doesn't just apply to the Board of Selectment. It applies to all our boards and committees. And so I guess I know Mr. Hagerty sent out the opinions. I think to all of the boards and committees. Am I right about that, Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe he did.
It probably is useful for us to you know, those are written by lawyers and they're written for the most part for lawyers. It's probably not a bad idea for us to send out a primer that basically sort of encapsulates what I just said in shorter and better wording to the boards and committees so that they understand exactly what that opinion requires of them. Does that make sense?
And Marty? Another comment, I actually see a lot of agendas and I still see ones that have member reports on them. So we're not universally doing that yet, but maybe following up with a town clerk who actually sees the agendas for posting. And if his staff keeps an eye open for agendas that are still saying member reports generally, it might be worth encouraging them to follow up with that committee and reinforcing, is that all you have in terms of understanding of what's going to happen? So that's that's a control point in the system that I think would be worth pushing on.
Mark, maybe maybe you or Vanessa can have a conversation with Jim and and get his thoughts on that and whether or not it would make sense. Not again, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to make him the the agenda.
Yeah. But but he is located at a key point in the process though.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
No, I was going to say, I will also point out that you know, clerk's office has been very helpful to us because one of the issues we have in the Zoom environment is that people post their agendas with the clerk as usual. They post a Zoom meeting and they fail to make sure that they've got a somebody to help run the meeting such as, you know, Vanessa or Katie or Melissa or Sarah or any any of the number of people who have volunteered to do that. So Jim's office has made sure that when people post their agenda, you know, either he or the staff are asking the question, have you booked a Zoom room and do you have a host? You know, just to make sure, because we have run into some issues where people didn't have a host and the meetings get delayed and you know, we we had one of these, oh, my God, emails going out one night, you know, because the meeting couldn't happen because no one knew what to do. And and we had some people step in. So he is helping to facilitate that and Jim has always been pretty eagle eye on a lot of the agendas. I don't know that it's a it's it's as much of a burden for him, but.
Okay. And and again, Mark, I can work with you on coming up with just a, you know, a five bullet points for for boards and committees to consider because again, just reading those opinions, it's, you know.
Yeah. Lot of tripwires.
Lawyers.
We need a 50-page brief.
Yeah, the brief is the greatest misnomer in the brief about them.
Lawyer brief is an oxymoron, as they say.
And and the final thing is, I I know one of our goals was to put together a a list of contracted services and we found ourselves in a position, I think, certainly the year before, Sammy, when you and I had just gotten elected for the first time and even last year, of not having thought about it soon enough. About what are the contracted services? Which ones do we want to consider, talk about going out to bid on? And I think I think the time is ripe to do that. So so specifically on my interest and I think others' interest is on the legal side of things. I think it's important for us to take a look at at those services and have a discussion about whether and how to bid them. Because I think the the appointment is on an annual basis. So.
So why don't, so I know that that I have a list that the town accountant has prepared and and, you know, but we have not audited to make sure that we're not missing anything. So why don't we, I have that for you for the 19th so that the board can begin to take a look and let us know if there's certain things that you want us to begin to prepare, you know, RFPs or or other documents to to put out to bid.
Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. All right, discussion of policy and procedures for building and demolition permits. Mark, maybe it's just best. And the reason this is on here is I think maybe it maybe it happened before, but but, you know, sort of ratatat, first 45 Highland Street, next 18 Middle Road, some issues came up about about whether our process was tight enough. Now, I'll put it as an aside that 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 I I don't think the demolition bylaw is serving the town particularly well right now. As we've as we've had to deal with these issues, I know I'm a broken record about this. It could have been drafted a lot better than it is, and I think it's creating issues. And at some point, I think we need to revisit it and and deal with amending or otherwise with that bylaw. That being said, this, Mark, why don't you update us on what's being done to make sure that 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 things aren't slipping through the cracks?
Sure.
Building Department and Historical, okay?
Just one point, just to remind the board that I believe Ms. Malinowski was the one who asked for placeholder for any, you know, updates or revisions to the demolition delay bylaw. So there is that opportunity that already exists in the warrant if if something does come to fruition. So I know that Ms. Lavoli, the building commissioner, and specifically Mr. Weishen, the Chair of Historical, have been having conversations and back and forth about how to, you know, ensure that there's levels of redundancy so that, you know, everybody is is notified when there are particular issues, you know, with a building permit or a demolition permit that is filed and and that everybody's in the loop. You know, as to whether the property is historical or not. The online permitting that we have for the building department now has required dropdown criteria, which requires the date and and of the of the property, but also the for demolishing, you know, a house or portion of a house. So that is the, you know, immediate trigger point in in the application. Depending on the date, if it's pre-1925, it's going to direct you to the demolition permit and which also is going to require Historical Commission approval, providing information in support or denial of of that of that permit. In the past, my understanding from Ms. Lavoli is that Historical Commission members didn't want to be on the permitting system because if if you have a permit that's put in the system and it requires conservation approval, fire department approval and planning board approval, all of those departments have to sign off in the system before that permit goes anywhere and back to the building commissioner for final sign-off. But I believe that Ms. Lavoli and Mr. Weishen or Ms. Lavoli has gotten Mr. Weishen to agree that Historical Commission members will now be on the viewpoint system. So they now can view permits and can, you know, and be assigned a permit to specifically for them to review to determine applicability. So I know that Mr. Weishen, Historical has been working on what they see as as rules and regulations within the within the demolition delay bylaw. And they want to have those put out on the building website. And I am just, you know, I've not seen the final version of that yet. But I I want to ensure that it's within the existing regulations and it's not you know, I guess the word is probably too interpretive of what you can and can't do. I think the notification to people applying for building permits or demolition permits, it's important to make sure they're aware of of the information. There is a demolition delay bylaw link on the department website, building department website now so that people have that information readily available. There's also a link on the building department website for historic properties. So we've tried to make that information a little more upfront. And I think that Ms. Lavoli and Mr. Weishen have done a nice job with trying to you know, make sure that you can keep, you know, keep both parties, you know, building and historical in the loop on on permits that are coming in.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments about that? Yeah, Ms. Malinowski?
Oh, Mark, does that mean that Historical Commission then has to sign off on every building permit or just on a demolition permit?
They would have to sign off on the permits that would be assigned to them. So if there is a demolition permit that comes in, so they're going to be able to see these things, Chelsea, but there will be certain ones that would be assigned to them that require their. that require their sign-off. So they will be put in the system just like Conservation or any other department that would have to review them.
So Ms. Lavoli will decide if it needs to go to Historical or not and assign it to them in the system?
Based on the information that is submitted, you know, that if the, if the date criteria and things of that nature trigger it, yes, then it's going to be assigned to Historical.
And what's, what's typically the turnaround time for an approval of a permit?
Uh, it's usually less than 30 days for, for routine, but it depends on permitting. So depending on if, if you've got to go to Conservation and you've got to go to Planning and maybe ZBA is involved, I don't want to say pecking order, and a lot of those things aren't done simultaneously. So it, it depends, but routine building permits, which normally aren't going to involve demolition, you know, are, are within 30 days.
Okay, so Historical is prepared to meet when needed if something like this comes up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Brian?
And the only thing I was going to add is just to follow on to that. So their Historical sign-off or any other, say Conservation Commission, those all requires meetings of those boards or commissions in order for that sign-off to happen?
I would think that they would need to be formal approvals, yes. I don't think that, you know, maybe, I, I couldn't really envision that you would give, you know, that the board would vote to give, for example, you, Mr. Shea, you know, we're going to give you the ability, the authority to sign off on these things on behalf of the board. I really think it's.
It'd be done right if we did it that way, but.
Sam, it looked like you had something?
Yeah. A couple of comments. I've been following this as well and getting calls about it, actually. You missed one on Main Street, Marty. There was one that created a flap there as well. So we've had three of them that have been interesting recently. It seems to me that, again, you're on the right track, Marty, in terms of the bylaw, needs some review and clarification, if you will. One of the things that occurred to me was maybe put in some sort of an appeal procedure there to provide for some flexibility, given what we've seen. One of the things that I've been troubled by is that although Mark's update on the new process, I think is very helpful and I think that should shortstop a lot of the problems that we've seen, there apparently have been occasions where, for whatever reason, the right box wasn't checked on an application, but yet in retrospect, you go back and look at the plans and it's very clear that the, the work that was problematic was being done there. So I think that it's, the challenge is to find a way to have all parties look more broadly at these things versus I'm going to check my box and only my box and not keep my eyes open for other things and try to shortstop problems that may be lurking there if I did a little more comprehensive review. And I don't know how you build that into the process necessarily, but I think, again, there was enough evidence on at least a couple of these that they thorough a look at the plans would have said, oops, we think there may be a problem here and avoid the, the crisis later on. So again, the process, I think, could stand some additional looking at. It sounds like we're making progress, but the bylaw, to me, again, offers the hope of clarifying some of these things that we can avoid people getting caught in a tough place, which is difficult to deal with without getting people upset and bringing the lawyers around and potentially involving legal action, so.
Maybe we'll have, I, I suspect we're going to have more time than, than, than the existing schedule would indicate to deal with, with maybe revising this before town meeting.
Yeah, but I think it's worth the effort to try to get something done with this.
Yeah, it's honestly, my, my view is that, that it's, that it's a, it's a little landmine of, of liability for the town that's waiting to happen. I just, I think that the bylaws is, is, is that poorly drafted.
Yeah.
You've heard me say that about other regulations and statutes, so my view of them generally, I guess.
If the legislature can't do it, how can we do it?
Well, this is a town, town effort, so. Okay, anything else on that? All right, Mark, if and when you get a draft of what Historical is considering, I mean, I would hope that they're going to circulate it to us, but if, but if and when you get it, I would appreciate that you send it to the board.
I will, I will share that with the board.
Okay. All right, I think we are next going to be joined by Mr. Malinowski.
Hi there, how are you?
Are you and Chelsea sitting facing each other?
Uh, we are on opposite floors of the house.
Okay.
And that, you know, for the record, I got three kids to sleep well in advance of this discussion, so.
Congratulations, Mr. Malinowski, that is amazing parenting.
Mrs. Malinowski shaking her head like, only a husband could claim that's a big deal.
Wore them out all day so that they would go to bed, right?
All right, Jason, you are our next to last, public comment to come, next to last public agenda item. So it's, you guys have been working pretty hard on this capital planning policy and, and I guess you and Lisa communicated that there is stuff going on with some other boards and committees that you'd like us to consider and, and if appropriate, approve it tonight. So why don't you tell us, we've all had a chance to read it, why don't you tell us what your, what, what your group is hoping to accomplish with this?
Yeah, and I know a lot of you follow our meetings, so especially if you watched our, our one meeting where we actually marked it up on screen for the better part of two hours, there was no shortage of public discussion and transparency on this topic. But we've been talking about this for months, in capital planning, really research what other communities are doing and what other communities have in place. And we kind of morphed it into one document and then added some specific processes, as you see, that we think are very specific to Southborough. I view this, and I think that the rest of the committee will view this as, as version one. There are undoubtedly situations that we will tackle along the way here that we didn't envision, but what we wanted to do was put a framework in place, especially hearing some of your earlier discussion around the budget, both capital and operating, but also just thinking ahead of creating some sort of consistency regardless of the funding source, right? So whether it be town meeting, whether it be a revolving fund, an enterprise fund, if we have one of those that would cover capital, that there's a consistent process that department heads, boards or committees would have to follow to make sure that, one, the need is actually well-vetted, and then, two, on the backend, that there would be some sort of oversight. This, what you have in front of you tonight is mainly around the planning process of what it would take to get something to town meeting. Obviously, you know, we're, we would bring something forward, subject to advisory, subject to POS discussion. We intend to discuss at our meeting starting on Monday, then how we would deal with the oversight provision, and that would be maybe a second policy if the, the committee's on board with something like that, you know, moving forward. So I'm happy to go into more detail of where we grabbed some of the, the details from here, but a lot of this stuff came from communities that actually got grants to help think through some of it. We thought about what similarities we have to those communities, what differences we have to those communities, and we really thought about what we've been dealing with for the last nine months of how we have brought some things forward to all of you, whether those ultimately end up on town meeting floor, I guess we'll, we'll see. But really to make sure that there's no shortage of vetting and prioritization before bringing something forward and it's not just a department head or a board committee saying, we want it, and trying to put the puzzle together more importantly, right, of how do we get the most bang for a buck? You know, whether it be Sam's topic of grants earlier or other topics of other funding sources, so you see some of that covered too. So that's the broad overview. I'm happy to take any questions, obviously if you're in a position to support it tonight, great. If not, I think the bare minimum is, is what you would need to support, you know, putting a policy in place so that I can take it back to capital for discussion next week.
Jason, I'll jump in first. Again, I, I, I watched some of the meeting where you marked this up. I'm, I'm somewhat of a glutton for punishment, but I couldn't be, I couldn't, I couldn't hang in for the whole thing. But I agree with you that there was, that there's been a ton of, of public discussion about this. And, but I also agree with the sentiment that, and I don't know, I don't know what this doesn't get at. And I don't think, I think you're right, we're not going to know what it doesn't get at until we've gone through a couple of cycles and realize, oh, we should have thought of this, or, you know, we should have considered approaching it this way. I'm comfortable with the work you folks have done and I think it's something that's, that's, if not sorely needed, you know, needed by the town to address its capital stuff. So that's, those are my thoughts and comments. Ms. Malinowski?
Just have one question. When you have a grant that you're applying for and there's also a match for it, do you have a mechanism in here to get notified so that you know if a department is applying for a grant that may need a match?
I think the Fire Department is probably the best example, you know, with their, they had been applying for an SCBA grant and there was a match component to it, so we have it in this year's capital plan. I think that's part of the communication strategy that I'll have to work on with Mark and Brian, you know, once your board adopts it, is, is how do we roll it out, right, in, in making sure that everyone's thinking through all those situations? But yeah, I think anytime there's going to be funding for a project, you know, we, we at least want to discuss it and make sure we're on the right track because the question is, is it the right grant opportunity to, that we should be chasing or is there a better opportunity that has a higher likelihood of success as well, I think is going to factor into some of the discussions?
Yeah, okay. And I, I think your committee spent a lot of time putting this together and I followed most of the conversation, so I'm comfortable with supporting this.
And I'm comfortable supporting this as well. I agree with what Marty had said. You know, I think all policies eventually evolve over time and require changes over time, but I think this in its current form is perfect to implement right now. Certainly we saw with the conduct policy, you know, that was, you know, put together at a time and place and, you know, several years later, there's, there's things that we need to, to modify with that. Not to say that in the, in future years, there are improvements that we can make to this, but I think it's ready to, to be implemented now.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Mr. Stivers?
Thanks, thanks, Jason, for the effort you and your committee made on this. I'd followed a lot of those conversations. I was impressed by the care and thoughtfulness that you did under this. I agree that it's a, an evolving process, but I think this is a great start on it and I support it as proposed.
So Jason, it sounds like you're going to get your vote and your approval for tonight. I'll move that the capital planning policy proposed by the Capital Planning Committee be endorsed and adopted by the Board of Selectment. Question? None? Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye, and I'm surprised Mr. Stivers didn't request a word version of this for his redline purposes.
Mr. Stivers rates aye.
My only, my only comment is that you should have made that comment after he voted. Not, not, not left that option open to him and Mr. Healy is aye.
Thank you all, and I just wanted to also thank Brian Valentine in particular. He was really instrumental, as I noted in my email, of helping facilitate the back and forth of not only our committee, but offering some thoughts of where he thought we'd hit some, some mousetraps along the way and, you know, really guided us to the end product. So kudos to Brian.
Back to those kids. Why don't we have it, they're already in bed.
They better, they better not be up. Have a good night.
Jason, all right, round two of public comment. Mr. Semino has his hand raised. I was wondering if he had just not turned off his computer, but no, he hung in for the entire meeting. Welcome, Paul.
Welcome, guys, thank you. I, I did hang in for the entire meeting, I'm glad I did. I, I appreciate it's late. I know, I know very well what it's like to be sitting through these, you know, for real versus just watching, so I'll be, I'll try to be quick. I, I'm, I'm looking for five minutes to talk about five things, not all of which will be a minute long, but hopefully the total will be five. But the first thing I'll say quite tongue-in-cheek, Marty, is that you clearly did not put a good audio system, a good microphone on your holiday list. I don't know if it falls to me to tell you, but I think the rest of these folks know is, is your audio sucks, Marty. It's, 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 it's vacillated between bad and dreadful, this entire meeting. I, I, I'm, I'm serious about that, but I, I'm tongue-in-cheek, but I'm serious. I, I, you're, I have to have you on volume 100 and everybody else on 20. So I'm seeing smiles and laughs, I think I'm not, I hope I'm not the only.
Volume doesn't account for me, there's definitely something wrong.
And I thought, and I thought it was my ears all the meeting long, so.
No, but.
Apologies, I'll deal with that by the next meeting.
All right, all right, fair enough, fair enough. Quick on, on contingency writing, can you, can we do it on, I'm sorry, I gave my, I gave my idea away, grant writing, can we do it on contingency? You, you write, you write a grant application, we get it, you get a little percentage of it. Instead of finding money in the budget, you take it out of the grant. Maybe that's, I, I, I don't know, if that's, it seems to me, if that's doable, then there must be some other town or city that's done it. So you don't even have to react to that, I just want to throw it out there. Quickly about office hours? Any, any citizen can contact any one of you now by phone or email, and if they catch you, you know, around town, they, Sam knows this well, he used to do it for, before he was on the board, right? So, so to help facilitate that by having office hours, I don't think changes, you know, the, 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 the nature of the communication or somehow elevates it to have to be public or recorded. So that's just my opinion, but I thought I'd throw that in there. A couple of serious topics regarding the public information request, you know, vis a vis the, the recreation situation. Marty, you, I think you spoke eloquently on behalf of the board in your explanation for what occurred. The one thing I would, that, that I would disagree about is the nature of the original redaction. I think that, I think it needs to be said that if, if there was a legitimate exception to the public records law here, and I'm not saying there wasn't, I have no opinion on the, the exception that was cited, but the redaction that resulted really was not defensible. I mean, it was like, it was 500 words that was, you know, 496 of which were redacted. Either, either, either there's an exception and we just don't produce a document, but to produce a document like the one we produced, I, I think it, it, it just, I think that was, you know, that was, that was probably ill-advised and you don't need to hear it from me, but I, 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 I reacted to it when I saw it because I, you know, that was sort of as a, as a lawyer myself, I wondered about the advice we got to, to release a document redacted the way it was versus just saying, look, there's a good, there's a good exception here and this is not public for that reason. Again, don't even react to that, it's just a, just a thought I wanted to share. The last thing that I do would, would like a reaction to is whether you guys, because I, I haven't been on one of your meetings in a while, whether there's been any discussion about the ostensible date for annual town meeting and how likely it is to move. And if you have talked about it and I missed it, then I apologize. Hang on, Marty, I gotta turn up my volume.
Yeah, I don't know what I, again, usually the last thing in the world I have to worry about is volume. I have people four and five rooms away from me, closing their doors. So I apologize for that, it'll be addressed. But yeah, pretty much every meeting, I, I think, Paul, that there is a, a general sense, I think by the board and by everybody in town, that the town meeting is not going to happen on March 20th. I cannot imagine the circumstances that could lead to an indoor town meeting in March. I just don't see it.
Yeah. I, I, I would only, you know, we, we obviously got, I guess, permission, for, for lack of a better word, from the state to postpone our meeting and there was a process, you'll all recall, about how we had to go about making that decision and setting the new dates and I, I can only assume that that guidance will be renewed or something similar will be coming out, but I haven't seen any or heard anything about that yet. So just, I ask you to keep your eyes peeled, as I will as well.
So I thought that that provision would remain in place until the state of emergency was lifted, so. And I could be wrong, I think it needs to be looked at, but I think that that provision that was enacted last year still is in place.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I, I think, Brian, you're probably right, I have not looked at the enabling language. It is kind of crazy that a state of emergency without some sort of re-upping or otherwise is going on 10 months now. But it looks like the Supreme Judicial Court is going to give Baker the authority to do that. It's kind of amazing to me. But I'm trying to remember, it was Baker issued a state of emergency, but it wasn't the state of emergency that gave this authority. Didn't the legislature pass?
Yes.
Specific legislation?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, they did. You know, and because there was already a provision in place to cancel it, I think, for like a weather emergency or things like that. And I think that the, that the modification continued to, you know, pandemic environment as well or condition.
Hey, Paul, about this, we will, it, it's a, it's a, I think it's a pretty short statute. And maybe you can even be around on the 19th. Why don't you on your end and we on our end, take a look at, at the, the existing declaration by Baker and act by the legislature and see. Because I don't, it's, it also is unclear to me whether we have the authority to set it for a date other than the town code allows. Or whether we just set the date and then it falls to you like last year to continue it if circumstances don't allow it.
Um, I, yeah, I think you may be right about that. And, and I, I agree with Brian Shea. I, I just think nobody thought this would be still going on 10 months later. And I, and so whether this sort of just continues to be an authority we have or it needs to be renewed, I think is worth looking into. Thank you all for not, not only your time right now, but everything that the last two and a half hours has evidenced the, the hard work you're doing. And have a good.
Take care, Paul, happy new year.
Alrighty, take care, guys.
We're actually getting out early tonight, Paul. This is a real plus. Bonus time.
Cheers.
All right, the board will be entering into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21. And not returning to open session to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, parent exemption seven, parent. To review and approve the executive session minutes of November 17, 2020. So I move that, that on the basis of that, that we go into executive session, not to return.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. We are, I guess it's not adjourned, we are finished with open session and going into executive.
Katie, if you want to make me host again, I can lock the webinar and you could just stop the recording. Thank you.
All right, well, folks, I'm sorry about the microphone. I usually do my earphones and the mic right here. I may have to go back to that, sorry about that.
I think it's been fine, you know, it's a little bit titty, but you know, it's usually when you turn your mic off, it's the first couple of words, it doesn't.